It is seven o'clock and. Everyone is here from the, from the board, so I want to call us to order. Thank you, everyone for joining us tonight. Mr. Ferrara, if you don't mind muting yourself. Thank you. So just quick call to order, roll call vote, Matt.
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
And Kevin?
Here.
And myself here, so we have the full board. Thank you, Susan, as our clerk and Aaron Kokinda, our community economic development director also on the call. Our first item of business is approval of our February thirteenth minutes and again, just to thank you to Susan for turning these around quickly and completely. It's an important part of the public record, especially when we're talking about the multifamily overlay. Are there any comments from the board about the minutes? Okay, I just have one comment. We did get a question about the flow of information and the voting regarding setting the public hearings for the two additional zoning overlay districts that are before the warrant that will be considered for the warrant. This is the self-storage overlay and the marijuana enterprises overlay. Just for clarity, the planning board, or the planning board received these from town council.
Did you cut the edges away from the meat?
On February 12th. And the, the evening before our planning board meeting, our vote that we took on the 13th, both of those votes were solely procedural to schedule these public hearings. We were not discussing any of the documentation at that point, having only just received them ourselves. The, the self-storage overlay was voted as item three and the marijuana enterprises overlay was votum, voted and the public hearing was scheduled as part of the items not anticipated by the chair because we received that so late ahead. After our agenda had been published. So the good news is all of this information is available on our website and the items, the notices, the public notices have been made in the, in the item. And so all of this information is available, should you have any questions. And it's detailed in our minutes. So there not being any other comments, can I get a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from February 13th.
Thank you, Bill, second, all in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so thank you very much. We have a couple of minutes before we open the public, we continue the public hearing at seven fifteen. So I wanted to jump ahead at least to tackle one or two items that are not anticipated from item five. And I thought I'd invite Bill Spalding to discuss the, the status of the bicycle pedestrian plan.
Thanks, Theo, and I thought it would probably be best just to quickly share my screen. As you can see, the bike and pedestrian accessibility plan presented by Aaron Kokinda and our town engineer, though we know last night at town council, it was really nice to see the revisions, the, the understanding of how all this content and information could be simplified and revised after receiving a ton of comments, a ton, meaning, I believe, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but was it, the survey was about two hundred and fifty as it produced, and I think we received thirty-six comments for last night's meeting, but yeah, yeah. So there, this is still open, if you could see on, on the screen that I'm sharing. This is, just go to the Wakefield page, you can even do Wakefield pedestrian bike accessibility, and you'll see there's a draft that was revised February. Submit your comments here, this is open until March first, which, is that Friday?
Yes.
Wow, okay. So please, if you get a chance to review, or if you have any questions, please submit it. It's really important to get the feedback. And this started with envisioned Wakefield to complete streets, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good stuff in here and there's a lot, we still have a way to go. But remember, this is guidelines and best practices. So when projects do come up, the town engineer and Aaron and the team, their teams can present this, help provide this for future grants and studies that we can, we can move forward with. Am I missing anything, Aaron?
No, I think you did a good job covering it. It's on the town council. You can do the video from last night as well. We were number four or five on the agenda, so you can kind of get an update of what the plan kind of covers, the changes that were made from the original document and next steps are on that as well. So we appreciate the public comments that we've received so far and anyone else that would like to submit, we welcome them as well.
Thanks, thanks, Theo.
Oh, you're, you're very welcome. One of the really important takeaways for me was really just about process and how important the public process is and that this is a really valuable visionary document, planning document that really does help set priorities and and has enough detail to really, I think, help people visualize what, what can come, so I, I really appreciate.
Mr. Chair, could I add one more comment?
Please.
Before we start the public hearing, I just wanted to make sure that everybody on, in the meeting understands that this meeting, this public hearing is not about the bike bed plan. And I haven't really, it's Aaron Kokinda and Bill Renaud that have really pulled this together, revised it since the M A P C and helped to pull it together. So I just wanted to put that out there, not thinking that something I drafted, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, and it really does touch on all of the, the traffic issues that Wakefield is confronting. And so that's, that does have some bearing on sort of all of the discussions, not just tonight, but with the zoning board and, and, and other discussions as we, we think about traffic and access in town. The, we have seven more minutes, are there, are there any other items not anticipated by the chair that people want to raise at this point? So yeah, Bill?
I am just another comment, and as the board knows and as Aaron knows, I pester town hall, our town administrator and Sherry Dalton quarterly with emails asking when we could be back in town hall. And if I remember correctly, and someone correct me if they know for sure, but I think in late twenty twenty-three, one of the town council meetings, some of the upper funds were allocated to provide updated A V services in a few of the conference rooms at town hall. So I am expecting and I am hoping that our future meetings soon could be, should be in person as well as on Zoom, which will give everyone a fair meeting voice at our meetings. So yeah, I just want to bring that up. I'll send another message out to see where that stands from our board, if, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair and the rest of the board.
Yes, we, we've talked about it in the past and I think every, everyone supports in person and, and hybrid meetings, so that would be valuable.
Okay, unless any other board member objects to it, I would like to send an email out to our town administrator, Steve Mayo and Sherry Dalton to ask for an update. Okay, I do have a reminder on my calendar, like seriously quarterly to, to remind, thanks.
That's fantastic. That's great, well, and I appreciate the reminder too, and we'll, we'll do that as well.
I could just give a few updates on the other plans.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I know we have about five minutes. Some people that are new here on the call, I sometimes give updates on other projects, planning initiatives that the town is working on. So this has really been under the conservation department, but we are still moving forward with our open space and recreation plan. There is a website for that as well. There was a public meeting back in January discussing the draft plan, and so you can find that online. I think some of that ties into the bike and ped plan too, just talking about open space and recreation and recommendations on how to better, what we have for currently for open space in the future as well as recreational uses in town, so feel free to check that out. You can find that on our website, it's here under the Conservation Commission, because they're really been the one leading it, and you can find the previous open space and rec plan there as well. Also, we are, a number of plans we've been working on, another one too is our master plan that's still moving forward. The bike ped plan has been really at the forefront right now because we've been working on it for a little bit and we'll be going in front of the town council on March eleventh with that. And the master plan will follow, not on that date, but we are continuing to work on that. So that will be another plan that will be in front of the town, and that's a planning board initiative too. So you can find more about that on the, the planning board's website too. So I just want to give a few updates on that. And you can view past public meetings, presentations from the master plan on that website. So it gives you an idea and talks about housing, which will be talked about tonight as well as open space and rec. So if you have a chance to check that out, I would highly recommend it. So, and we'll keep you up to date at future meetings about that.
Terrific, thank you very much, that's two, two good reminders. The, Kevin, do you want to give a quick reminder about the bylaw review committee?
Sure, so the bylaw review committee is still going through the process of looking at the zoning bylaws, working with attorney Bobrowski to update those. I sent out the most recent updates to the zoning bylaws to the planning board members probably about a month ago. We haven't had a meeting with attorney Bobrowski since then. Our last meeting was actually spent looking at the language for the bylaw for the M B T A communities law. Not the content so much, just the, the phrasing of it, the verbiage. So Jim, I think you probably received a few suggestions on that from Chair Lieber. If not, those will be coming soon. Nothing major, just small wording things here and there to, to be consistent without other updates to the bylaws are kind of proceeding.
And that, that timeline is still for spring meeting of twenty twenty-five, so there's, there's still a lot of.
It's, it's still a process, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, wonderful. All right, got about ninety seconds left. Yeah, we can, we can all do a little juggling. Gosh, I don't, I don't know. The, our website is, as Aaron mentioned, up to date. Oh, I, I can, I can take sixty seconds. Another item under not anticipated by the chair is regarding the Clyde Court subdivision passbook agreement form of surety, town council Tom Mullen has reviewed and accepted this agreement. So we'll, we'll take the steps, the next steps to proceed and move that forward. So we, we can wrap up the path, all of that and move forward, so. The, depending on my phone versus my computer, I've got seven fifteen, so I would like to formally continue our public hearing on the proposed M B T A three A's community overlay district, which we opened at our last meeting on February thirteenth. I have a couple introductory comments that I want to make for the, the group because I'm seeing some folks who have been on the meeting, but also other new attendees. I want to remind everybody that each speaker is allotted up to, pardon me, a maximum of five minutes to speak and share questions or comments on the proposed overlay. I'm going to be the timekeeper. We really ask, it's important that you introduce yourself, your address, and if possible, turn your camera on so we can see you and have a, have a be able to receive your comments. We also want to make sure that everyone who's attending the meeting is heard. Second, from a process perspective, the goal of the public hearing is to receive your questions and comments about the proposed overlay as we've recommended by the planning board on January twenty-third. We say this frequently and we really mean it and take it to heart that your questions and feedback are critical. And we take all of this under advisement as we consider our next steps. All of your questions, especially specific about wording or other elements are really important to help make sure that all the aspects of this proposed district really are reviewed and considered. It is also really important that each of you know that we take all of your questions and comments seriously and with respect. This is a complicated issue and there are a number of things in play as, as we think about and discuss it. So I want to give everyone on the board and community members in the public hearing some grace and respect as we proceed with this discussion. My last two comments are that we don't have a lot of discretion to make wholesale changes at this point in the process, and that's really what the role of town meeting is as the legislative and deliverative body for the town. The planning board in the, the context of this public hearing and our, our continuing discussion in advance of town meeting is to clarify specific language or specific features of the map as long as it stays within four corners of the article is written. So again, it's up, it's up to town meeting to debate and decide really wholesale changes from what's, what's been discussed so far, and that's really the beauty of, of town meeting. And lastly, I do want to summarize the planning board's development and review process of the multifamily overlay district to give everyone the full context for the work and the time that's been invested in this overlay district and in response to the M B T A's Community Act. We've had a working group, an interdisciplinary working group made up of representatives from other town committees, zoning boards, sustainability committee and town staff along with the planning board as well as others in the community, and they've really considered all of the variables generated a range of options and considerations, including a number of different maps as they worked through all the various parameters of, of the law and considering all of the policy issues at play, both around Wakefield Station and Green, and Greenwood Station, ultimately leading to the, the district and the map that you have before you. Now, all of these maps, all of this discussion is publicly available through the recordings of the working group and on, on the website. So in addition to the working group, the planning board helped three public Q and A sessions. We're continuing this public hearing and again, I think the, the message I do want everyone to receive as we start tonight's discussion really is that the central value of the planning board is to have a fully transparent, fair and considerate process. So I'm going to turn it over to Jim to walk through this quick presentation. We'll, we'll take comments and then we will then summarize the, what we've heard at the end of, of the night as a more formal, a more effective way of responding to folks' questions use your time a little more effectively tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Theo. I, I want to echo what Theo said in terms of the, the process. You know, I think we're, we're trying to do the best we can to juggle a number of different considerations as the working group went through this process, presented the recommendation of the working group to the planning board, and then the planning board unanimously voted to for it to the town warrant. So Theo, can you see, can you see my screen just to make sure that I've got the A V correct? Thank you. So overall, the zoning process where we stand to date, so that working group process that Theo referenced resulted in the planning board on January twenty-second of twenty twenty-four, referring the map that you'll, that everyone here will see to the town council. Town council refer it back to the planning board. So at this point, based on the way the public process works, is that substantive changes cannot be made that are outside of, as you mentioned, the four corners of the law. The map between now and town meeting cannot change, but on the floor of town meeting, it does have the ability to change if someone makes a motion to change it to a specific map. There has to be a specific map associated with the proposed change. So based on some of the feedback that we've received through the public hearing process, members of town staff and members of the planning board are looking at an alternative, I'll call it minimum compliance map that may be able to be available for a said motion in order to facilitate that discussion and then let the voters of town meeting make that determination. That map is not complete and is still, is going to be with the planning board based on the feedback that the working group had developed as the working group was evaluating this. So that's where we stand. The, the planning board at the conclusion of this public meeting process has to have a vote of whether or not to recommend acceptance of the map as currently presented or to recommendation to not accept it. And that recommendation will be presented by the planning board to the town meeting. We anticipate that that is going to occur at the spring town meeting, which is scheduled for April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. So the purpose of this is, this meeting is to, to answer any questions that folks have and, you know, be able to take feedback and report public comment and clarify and provide any education for folks who have not been plugged into the overall process as this been developed. Members of the public will be given five minutes to provide feedback. And as a reminder, the planning board cannot make significant changes to the bylaw map during the public hearing process. Again, at town meeting, the map could change, the map cannot get larger during the town meeting process, but it could theoretically get smaller. So what are we even talking about as a summary? In twenty twenty, a, the M B T A zoning map in section three of the forty, of reform of section forty A, so three A was passed. What this did is this, this required communities to, that are serviced by the M B T A to pass a multi fam, multi-family zoning district that allows multi-family housing as of right. The map that you'll see today will comply with the state zoning requirements. The intent is for it to be centered on Wakefield's downtown. It allows as of right, multi-family housing zoning up to three stories in height and a maximum of four units on any individual lot. It's a district overlay, so all of the zoning, base zoning that exists today would stay intact. This is a zoning change for capacity, it's not a production mandate from the state. What does zoning capacity mean? It's a concept that we've been talking about, a decent amount. What it means is that the, just the zone has to have the the zone has to have the ability to be developed as of right into four units. That does not mean it has to be. So there are a number of parcels in town that currently have zones where you're allowed to have two units, for example, as a right, and people have not, have not liked to do so. But you can see on this slide, you know, this is an existing single family that has to have the capacity for four units. And then, you know, same thing where existing units are two, had have capacity of four, so that would be a net increase of two if that were to be fully built out. Again, not a, not a housing mandate, and you can kind of think of the zoning code as a menu for options available to homeowners and potential developers. So why is the state even, even having this conversation? So since nineteen ninety, housing has gone up almost four times in terms of the price, the median price for a house. One of the reasons why the state believes that this is occurring is there's a lack of new supply coming onboard. Massachusetts permits half of the units as the average U S state, and we were in the bottom ten in terms of houses that were permitted in twenty twenty-two. The state has provided numbers that they believe that there's a two hundred thousand unit housing shortage in Massachusetts to stabilize housing prices. I've heard other estimates that think it may be even higher than that. But basically, the reason why we're talking about this is Massachusetts housing is getting more expensive. The state has identified a lack of supply as a major reason why. If you zoom in specifically to Wakefield, we can also feel the impacts of this. People, I'm sure, have, that follow the real estate trends in the town can appreciate, you know, from twenty, from October of twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, saw an increase of about thirty-five thousand dollars for the, that median home. So about half a million dollars up to seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars roughly. If you look at Redfin, they rate us as one of the most competitive markets in the country with a, you know, competitive score of ninety-two. And as of February seventh of this year, there's only six homes actually for sale in Wakefield total. What if Wakefield doesn't comply with this housing law? As folks who may be following the news are aware, Milton right now is going through some, some back and forth with the state, but Milton's actually being sued by the state as of today, a lawsuit was filed, but beyond those harder to define legal action by the state, if there's non-compliance, the, the things that are definable is that the state identified a list of seventeen programs that non-compliant towns would be ineligible if they did not pass compliant zoning. Wakefield received three, three point seven million dollars from these programs over the last three years. Some of the examples include an agenda for our master, or a grant for our master plan as well as improvements to the water main on North Ave. Terms of public meetings and presentations, we've been, since April of twenty twenty-two, when this, this was first discussed at the town council, and then the planning board picked this up in December of twenty twenty-two with a series of question and answers. Again, as Theo mentioned, the, all these presentations and all of these public listening sessions, question and answer sessions and meetings presenting to town council, zoning board of appeals, environmental sustainability committee, all these are recorded and available for anyone to view on our website. You know, we've almost had thirty meetings and presentations to date. So reasons for the proposed, the, the district that the working group recommended to the planning board and the planning board voted unanimously to refer to the warrant, the, the reasons are as follows. The zoning map that you'll, you'll see, you know, starts to address long-term housing shortage supply. The zoning was created such that if we are going to be creating new housing, where it is, where would it be located that makes the most sense for Wakefield that would help support our downtown business and community assets? Locating it near transit with the intent of having the amount of cars introduced by any new housing be minimized to the greatest extent possible. And the approach that was selected by the working group was to have a lower impact from a size of development and impact for any one particular project instead of trying to make a smaller district where a larger building could be allowed as of right, having smaller buildings that are the same dimensions of the existing housing stock in the area over a wider area. So it tries to make lower impact development easier, so we're not relying on larger projects for, to deliver any new housing stock to the town. So to put a finer point on some of those items from the housing supply perspective, the zone was crafted with the intent to allow for high-quality houses for families and individuals of all stages and income levels to be built, which would allow us to diversify the housing stock and increase the total housing stock to offer more opportunities and choices for current Wakefield residents. In addition, we were, the intent of the district is to drive economic growth to our commercial corridor due to residential presence directly adjacent to those downtown businesses and help support those downtown businesses, which helps increase our tax base by creating more vibrancy and activity and via foot traffic, because people will live near those businesses and then those other community assets such as the cultural exchange or the civic center. In terms of why we, why the working group and the planning board? In terms of why we, why the working group and the planning board elected to locate it where this district is located is besides the business aspect to try to minimize some of the impacts. The intent was to locate this near transit because there's a requirement we had to locate a certain amount near the commuter rail station, but there's also there was also a desire to take advantage of bus lane that is runs along Main Street. And to try to locate if new housing stock is going to be delivered to locate it in an area where residents who are coming in would potentially use public transportation as a method of getting around instead of being solely car dependent. Obviously, everyone understands that people who move in who are who are coming in from this new housing aren't only going to use public transit, but by locating it near public transit, the thought is is that they would be more likely to use it and minimize the impact as new people potentially move to the area. And again, the intent of this is to try to make it so lower impact development processes easier so that we're not relying on only larger scale projects that have a major or larger impact to the community and a larger impact to the neighborhood character development. But to make it so if more smaller projects can go forward, then have it so that would be the mechanism that we'd be adding new housing and new units to the housing stock in Wakefield. So the working, you know, trying to balance all the different elements of the the law, the working group was mindful of the following when this map was developed is the height. It's always a concern when we're talking about new development, but this district proposes on maintaining the thirty foot height that's consistent with the general residence zoning that exists today on the books. Density, it's a proposed maximum of four units per lot. The existing zoning for the for the vast majority of this zone allows two units as of right today. So it'd be going from two units as a right up to four. So the thought is that instead of allowing five or six units as of right, you have four and you're trying to minimize the overall impact of this district on the neighborhood character. The proposed district does maintain planning board site site plan review authority. So there is still an act, an active element of local control and review. So it's not allowing people to just submit a billing permit with whatever they want. They the any proposed development under this zoning still has to go through a site plan review and still have to comply with dimensional regulations that exist that are have been crafted to match the existing dimensional regulations we have on the books today. And again, the plant, the working group took it took into consideration the transit options to try to locate it in a in a manner such that it would minimize the impact to existing residents by locating it near transit and trying to minimize the overall impact of any new houses that got delivered to the to the area. The the intent is that if Wakefield is going to have to pass a zone to make it so it would be a zone that we think is a good idea on its merits regardless of what the state is requiring us to do. And that ultimately is where the working group came up with the zone that the working group felt was appropriate. The planning board of thought it was good planning and the planning board voted unanimously concurring with the conclusions of the working group. So one of the requirements that we're talking about from the state, Wakefield has to have a district that has one thousand six hundred and ninety six units as a capacity. One note here, while that is the minimum, the state does recommend that you pass a zone with a ten percent buffer in case some lots are considered ineligible through the pre-application process. So that's something to just keep in mind as a as a separate aside, but we had a minimum land area of thirty six acres. A minimum density of fifteen units an acre, which is important for some of the the choices that were made on why we cited it in Wakefield Junction in lieu of Greenwood. And the the percent of the district had to be located within the station area was seventy five percent. And then there's this compliance model that you have to fill out in order to make sure that the district that's being proposed is compliant with state requirements. Thank you, Aaron Kokinda, for managing that on the town staff after the consultant that we had engaged with the state uh his contract ran out, but Aaron's been doing an awesome job being able to update these maps and get us to a point where we feel confident that we the map that is being presented will be compliant. So that compliance map model, so i- it's a multi-step process, but you have to determine the district boundaries. Make sure that you're you're meeting some of the other requirements related to where the district is located versus transit. Make sure that you meet requirements related to making the the district continuous, certain percentages. So and then also making sure that certain sections that are being considered are included that or are not being included in your calculations based on some areas that are excluded based on directions in the state related to watershed or public land. Those other different things. One note, you do have to take the lot that exists today and as they exist today, when you're developing these calculations. So for example, Foundry Street, the large parcel where that contains the redevelopment of the six story building. If you were to include that in this district, you'd get credit for four units, which would drive your density down. So it didn't make sense for for this particular project or this particular zoning effort. You have to determine dimension requirements. The state has this this in this compliance model. When you input all the setbacks, it'll rule out the a certain lot that it thinks aren't going to be feasible. And I don't, I can't say I understand all the particularity particularities of that Aaron does, but there's certain things that the state is looking for in terms of if you have a lot, you can't just make it so the setbacks that make it so the buildable proportion of it is zero percent. So there's certain thresholds that have to be met. And then, once you go through this compliance model, you have to ensure that all the zoning policies of the district will comply with the law. There's a handful of things you can't do. For example, make it so it's only allowable to be aid restricted like seniors living, for example. And then you have to enter all this data in this compliance model and then test the different iterations. So the proposed district, if we're just baselining it against what exists in that area today, the proposed district would have a capacity of the two thousand three hundred and fifty nine units you see on the screen. It it, you know, without doing anything, there's one thousand six hundred and forty one units that have been built in that district today. So there's a significant number of the units that exist, you know, without doing anything. The proposed district, if every building in this district were to be uh demolished and then rebuilt up to the full capacity, you end up with sixteen units an acre. Today, without doing anything, you're at about eleven units an acre. So there's a there's a there's a there would be a theoretical increase if it got built out to a hundred percent, which I think everyone understands we would not ever get to that point. For the zoning size, a hundred and forty five acres and that's about three percent of town's land. And then right now, the zoning that exists are mostly general residents and business where two families are allowed as of right and multifamily buildings or mixed use developments. There's overlay districts where there's alternative separate ways that a building can get approved through that zoning process, which this will not impact. That will still be an alternative mechanism that uh people, landowners or developers can use to develop housing. But that's via a special permit discretionary process at this time, and that's why it doesn't comply with the requirements in state law. And then age restrictions are not required under both. So the other thing that we thought as a working group that was important and the planning board seemed to agree was that the dimensional, you know, what does the building actually look like? There was an effort to make it as consistent with the zoning that exists today. So maximum stories is the same three stories maximum. Lot size is four thousand square feet, which is consistent with our multifamily and mixed use overlay districts. The building height maximum is thirty five feet, which is consistent with all the zoning that exists currently today. And then the parking is essentially the exact same as it relates to one point five units per dwelling unit, which is the proposed in the multifamily district in order to make it so we could demonstrate compliance with the state law. The existing parking in town wide right now is one point five units for one and two beds from two units for three beds. And then setbacks, copy paste from existing zoning, front setback of fifteen feet, side of ten and rear of twenty. So with all that being said, this is the map that was developed by the working group presented to the planning board and the planning board voted unanimously to refer it to the town warrant. You can see that the work, the map is centered on the downtown district between north and Main Streets. But it does have sections that are to the west of North Ave and to the east of Main Street, roughly bounded by Cedar Street plus a couple parcels to the west and the Pleasant Street in the northeast. The the other thing that you may notice is that the parcels that are currently on North Ave, Albion and Main Street have been excluded, and that's my intent. The thought process was if you have a low building, you know, single story, for example, that is currently commercial oriented, the did not make sense from a planning perspective to have that be able to be converted to a residential when the intent of that street from a planning perspective is to keep it commercial. So the intent of this zoning district is to keep Wakefield's commercial streets commercial and then to allow housing to be built adjacent to those commercial streets such that it would increase the traffic and be able to make it so more patrons would come to those businesses. And then as a comparison, the map you're seeing on the screen right now, the yellow is our general residence where the is two families are allowed as a right. The red is a business district and then you can see the dash blue line is the proposed district superimposed on top of the existing zoning. You can see that almost the entire district is within general residence or business. There's a handful of parcels that are partially in the single family districts all the way to the western edge of it, but it's ninety five percent or more is within those two districts that already allow two families as of right. So the, you know, in terms of what is the actual impact, what is it going to look like that's different? There are a number of houses that currently exist in this district that are three and four unit dwelling homes. So you can see a list of, you know, a series of examples on the screen right now of buildings that exist in the district today that are three or four family dwellings, which is what this would really allow that's different than what exists in our current zoning today. Some specific examples, just to kind of understand what the what some of these, you know, how big of a a unit can you get on, how big of a lot? On Pleasant Street, there's a four unit on a fifty six hundred square foot lot. On Richardson Ave, there's a four unit on a forty three hundred square foot lot. You can see there's this three unit on Wakefield Ave on another five thousand and changed lot. And on Avon Street, there's a four unit lot with about six thousand square feet for that building. The thought is that by passing this district, buildings such as this development completing two thousand and twenty two on Chestnut Street, which is a, you know, a little bit under a seven thousand square foot lot, allow three units. This would be allowed as a right. This was, this building was not allowed as a right mostly because of a dimensional issue. It was an existing building that was redeveloped into a three unit, but and they had to get a special permit, which is the main difference between what that process, that project went through and what is being proposed in this today would be. But if you look at the map of the district, all of those buildings I just showed on the screen, those those precedent examples, you can see a lot of them already exist in the zone that currently constitutes and you kind of get a sense that there it's not like it's just one concentration of them. So some of the frequently asked questions that has have come up is, is, you know, is this a state? Is this the state mandating us to build new more new housing? No, it's not a mandate. It's just a requirement to have a zone that would allow for for this new housing to be developed, but it's not a quota per se. Does this impact Wakefield's forty B status? It doesn't impact until two thousand and thirty. The net that's the next time that we'd have to take a total housing inventory with the two thousand and thirty census. And until then, the multifamily district won't impact forty B calculations. As an aside, anything that's being permitted that we're talking about, it it would be one percent of the new units that would be actually delivered would impact our forty B status. So it's not. If you just think about the the numbers, they're you know, one percent of what we're talking about in terms of the differences ends up being a relatively modest amount of affordable housing to be required under the forty B. Wakefield Station, why was Wakefield Station the center of this and not Greenwood? Essentially, the working group, when the working group evaluated this, the zone that the thought the working group thought made the most sense from where the district would want to be, the existing lots were bigger than the existing lots around Wakefield Junction, which mean that six unit buildings would have been allowed as of right in around in and around Greenwood to meet the minimum density calculations. The working group felt this wasn't consistent with the decent neighborhood character. Additionally and separately, at a later date, the working group was asked to evaluate other sections near Greenwood. The determination was that while that would allow four units as a right, kind of farther to the east of Greenwood, that those that area was predominantly and almost exclusively single family homes with no multifamily homes scattered in like around Wakefield Center. The working group came to the conclusion that while additional density around Greenwood would make sense as a planning effort, it does not make sense in the context of this law because the number of hoops you have to jump through for all these dimensional requirements, minimum densities and such, it'd make more sense to have a separate effort, separate uh rezone where you could potentially allow either duplex or three units as of right in lieu of going from one to four comparing to the neighborhood built character there up to what we have to have in order to comply with the state law. Can the units be age restriction? No. Well, units don't allow this to be age restricted units. You can't make it so the overlay is only for mostly senior living is what the state is trying to make sure that people aren't all only allowing. It has to be suitable for families with children. Will you need you need new units be rentals or condos? The answer is it depends. The proposed district does not require homeownership, so you new units per permanent under this district will be condos or rentals depending on the homeowner or developer. And then does the district require affordable housing? Unfortunately, not. To include affordable housing component associated with this law, you'd have to allow ten units as a right. The larger than the working group felt was appropriate based on the scale and the neighborhood character impacts of a ten unit as a right development. And so unfortunately, the affordable housing was now not able to be included on the basis of that. But I would note that the town still does have an eighteen percent inclusionary zoning bylaw for larger multifamily mixed use developments through through the existing zoning bylaw that's on the books today. So with that, and that's the presentation. I hope that was helpful for folks who are not familiar with this. As a reminder from what Theo said, the planning board does not have the ability to change the map prior to the inclusion in the town warrant. However, we are evaluating between town staff and members of the planning board and there will be subsequent conversation on the planning board in terms of developing or call an alternative minimum map that could be the basis of a proposal on the floor of town meeting. Trying to incorporate feedback from the working group as the working group went through that process. But that's not what we're here to talk about today in terms of the particularities of that map that's still in development. But that's something that will be will be available once it's finished being developed based on the feedback that working group and planning board have received to date from the different public hearings. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you if that if that works.
That's that sounds good. We've got so far two people with their hands raised. Uh I'm gonna invite Nancy Bertrand uh to unmute and uh ask your question.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm Nancy Bertrand, Seven Shumway Circle. Um I've lived in Wakefield for forty three years, all of them on the west side. And during that time, my husband and I have spent hundreds, maybe thousands of hours serving on committees and town boards because like you, we love the town. So we totally respect and honor the committee for your many, many hours of planning and discussing and headaches and revising and writing that went into the formulation of the plan. However, unfortunately, I think it needs a lot of work. Most of the time that I've spent on Wakefield committees has been centered on researching and studying and writing the town's history. I've been on the board of the Hart John House and the Historical Society for over thirty years. And I chair the Wakefield Historical Commission. I really appreciated the comments made by most of the speakers who have appeared at your previous meetings, which I've watched with great interest. They largely centered on the character and the appearance of the town. And upon the stress that this plan will place upon historic resources. Wakefield's historic resources are a precious and rapidly diminishing finite resource. And when they are gone, they are gone. Because your plan centers upon the very heart of downtown historic Wakefield, where most of the properties designated by the Mass Historical Commission in concert with the Wakefield Historical Commission um have centered it. It's like you're putting out a welcome mat for developers to sweep in and pull down historic homes and buildings. Sure, they might operate within the envelope of any given historic house and say that they are rehabilitating it, but there's nothing that would stop them from paying lip service to the demolition delay by law while at the same time making historically inappropriate changes to a property that will render it almost unrecognizable. It has happened before too many times. Or they just wait out the, the, the months and they, they pull it down with bringing the bulldozers. I've heard demolition by law uh touted the, the demolition delay by law touted as a means of stopping the destruction of historic properties at your previous meetings. I have conducted and sat in on countless hearings on the bylaw, so I can tell you it's all but toothless in its abilities to save historic building. All it gets us is six months. With the current wave of overdevelopment going on in this town, it's like trying to put out a blazing house fire with a bucket of water. This is not unique to Wakefield. It's a problem that all the neighboring cities and towns are dealing with as well. But as a community, we've got to stop allowing and even welcoming precisely this type of overdevelopment that this plan is encouraging. We may not have forty C historic districts in town, but we do have national register districts, Church Street, Lafayette Street, Main Street, Yale Avenue. And all of these are included in your plan. Why in God's name are we making a plan that will guarantee the destruction of the character of our town? I've heard it said that your committee considered spreading this plan out um to Greenwood and rejected it for a variety of reasons, including that Greenwood has more single home, family homes in it. So what? What about the long suffering west side? I happen to own a business on Main Street. And at times with the increased traffic in town and the ways app that leads one twenty-eight traffic through our town, it has taken me thirty minutes to drive down Prospect Street to get to Main Street. Frankly, it's a lot easier for us here on the west side to go to Stonem or Reading to do our shopping. So the idea that this plan would encourage economic development of downtown is laughable. And to repine that people occupying these proposed new housing units will all walk downtown rather than use their cars is at best idealistic and at worst fatuous. Preservation Plan. I have it right here. Um, adopted by the planning board in two thousand and three. Focuses on preserving our historic character, including not only the built environment, but also to help conserve streetscapes. And if you double the number of parking spaces that would be need, needed to and required by the increased number of units, we'll see lawns and green spaces destroyed.
Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Bertrand. We're, we're at the
I, I had a couple more uh sentences, just a couple. I wrote them down so I could be concise. Um, I just want to say we need to preserve the vibrancy of our community assets. We need to preserve and protect the character of our neighborhoods. If we, if we need to meet a state mandate, let's do it by providing only the number of units required and by spreading them out throughout the town, not centering it all on one area. And in conclusion, the preservation plan, one of the things that did call for was that the Wakefield Historical Commission should be included as a reviewing agency in the regulations of the planning board and the Board of Appeals. So I am respectfully asking for this to be done in future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I, we've got uh three or four more hands raised. Um, I think uh I'm gonna uh Julie Scott, I think that's you. Um, you were one of the, one of the first ones.
Hi, can you see me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna make it quick because I'm at the Boston Garden. I'm at the Celtics game, but I'm very passionate about this issue, so I'm
Where do you, where do you live Julie?
I live at Fourth, Fourth Central Street, Wakefield.
Thank you.
I thank everybody for being here. Don't forget that this is going to take a, um, however you feel about it, you have to attend town meeting to have your voice heard about the final outcome of this. I've had a lot of questions for the um planning board over the past few months, but here's a doozy. We voted in November at the November town meeting for an energy code, and there's almost no information on the town hall website. This will affect every development in Wakefield in ways that we have, didn't even have detailed discussions at town meeting about. So because I'm at the game, I'm gonna go and watch the game and I'm gonna watch the rest of this on tape. But I would like five minutes. I'm going to watch for five minutes. I would like anybody who is on this call who has information about what's going, what the energy code means for Wakefield and development and adding apartments onto your building, how many ever it is, what is it? Electrical changes, um solar changes. All of this is expensive, but there's not one expert in town, even the building inspector, who has this information. And it's a shame that nothing has been updated on the town hall's website about this energy code for four months since the November town meeting. There's a pamphlet that the Sustainability Committee, I believe, posted on the town hall website. But this energy code is going to be a zinger, and I'd like some information about it. So if anybody's on the call or on the planning board has information, I have also asked multiple times that the building inspector be at these meetings. He hasn't been here. I've also asked for our state leadership, our state senator and our two state reps to be here, and they've been nowhere. I initially sent an email to all our town boards asking them to invite them to such meetings as this tonight. And it hasn't happened. I'm disappointed in that. If you devise another plan before the town meeting, I certainly hope there is another meeting for us to come and see some sort of a revision before it's hastily presented at town meeting and you would expect us to understand it during the hour or two that we would be talking about it. Anything that's revised, please bring it to the community in a meeting similar to, to tonight. So thank you and go at it about the energy code. I'd be very interested to hear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Scott. Um, uh, the energy code specifically is not part uh of this discussion tonight. Um, certainly welcome the opportunity to have a deeper uh discussion um amongst the planning board and with other members of town.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add a comment.
Sure.
This is something that we could address. Aaron or I could have just addressed this after the comments are done.
Sure.
If, if there's time for that. Thanks.
Sure. All right. All right. Uh, next up, I think, uh, Donald Dusenberry.
Uh, yes, I'm Don Dusenberry, twenty-three Parker Road in Wakefield. And um I was at the, your last public hearing. And I'm happy to hear that there is some discussion underway about now a minimum uh complying alternative, because this is, uh, I think, an essential aspect of what you should be doing. We should not be imposing on residents of this town's anything more without voluntarily deciding to do so that, that is minimally required to meet the requirements put on us by the state. There should be two votes as a minimum to address the issue if this group, this board believes that it's in the town's benefit to have a larger district. It's something the town should decide independently of uh complying with the state law. Now regarding the state law, I, you know, I've looked at it. I don't see anything in it about lots. I see uh minimum number of units, minimum density and minimum size. And I don't understand really why we don't take the sixteen ninety-six and divide it by fifteen and say a hundred and thirteen acres need to be a, a set aside. And you know, as a ma- as a maximum, a hundred and thirteen acres need to be set aside in this district. Could be less if we had a higher density. And along those lines, I don't, I heard some reasons last time why Foundry Street isn't included here, but I still don't understand that. Because in fact, this town is doing what the state wants us to do, maybe kicking and screaming. But the properties that are being developed along Foundry Street and the corner of West Water and uh and, and uh North Ave and now across the street from the Americal Center, these are all exactly what the state is asking for, and we're doing it. As I said, maybe kicking and screaming, but we're doing it. I don't know why we can't have Foundry Street included. The law does allow for sub-districts where you have different densities. As long as the entire district has the required density. Now those units that are, those buildings that are going up on Foundry Street, you know, if that were to be included, if we were to match that density and envision it may be more of Foundry Street, we'll go that way eventually, and I imagine it will. There would be hundreds of units along Foundry Street alone that could be at a much higher density than the fifteen units per acre that is uh the minimum required. And that would alleviate developing other portions of this plan at the fifteen as a minimum. I think we ought to have something that says that we have um uh, we, we allow this multifamily development, minimum density fifteen per, per uh per acre, maximum say twenty per acre and not com- not hinge on existing lots. Maybe that's a requirement I haven't seen, but I don't see it anywhere. So anyway, bottom line, two votes. I don't understand why Foundry Street isn't included at a much higher density than fifteen units per acre, so as to minimize the impact elsewhere. And I don't want to impose unnecessarily on residents of, of this great town, a requirement that we don't need to without their consent. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we've got Don Millward.
Hello, um, Don Millward, eighteen Emerald Street. Um, I just have two questions that I hope someone could um just address tonight. Um, I've already spoken uh, uh, one of these. Um, I'm not going to repeat everything Nancy and Donald said. Um, I'm in agreeance with everything um that was addressed. Uh, my first question is, how many people, and I apologize, I could probably Google this, but how many people are on the planning board? There's five people on the planning board? Oh, thank you. And how many people are on the working groups that are in the planning board?
Two.
Okay. All right. Um, my, my one concern that I do have has to be because I live very close to the area that is in the zone. Um, is, is the parking. Right now, you're, if I understand this correctly, I'll take Pearl Street for an example. The majority of Pearl Street are two units. And if I read this correctly, those two units sitting on the lot that they are in now can easily be turned into a four unit. Now, if you drive up Pearl Street now, it, it's hard. It's hard to get around Pearl Street. And that's the way it is currently. So if that Pearl Street is part of the zone and now you're putting two more units and we're all hoping everyone's gonna, you know, use the commuter rail or ride their bikes. But realistically, we're still gonna have cars. I just don't understand how that street in particular, you've got Bryant with a school on it. You're only allowed to park on one side. The zone that is currently being allowed is already so tightly compromised that it, it, we're just gonna be putting more and more. I think we are missing out uh by not including Greenwood. Um, I know the map isn't gonna change. I just, if someone could address tonight, how you intend to deal with the parking on those streets, um, is, is m- my concern.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Millward. All right. Uh, next up is Ted Gaffney.
Good evening, uh Ted Gaffney, twenty Morrison Road West. Um, first I'd like to say I, I totally agree with Mr. Dusenberry. Um, and I have recommended um the Foundry Street and even maybe some of the area east of Lake Street being included uh in the, in the proposed zoning. Um, it, you know, that area, as Mr. Dusenberry rightly said, there's multiple um condo and, and apartment buildings being developed down there, and I don't understand why that area is not included, and I agree with him in terms of, you know, increased increased density there that would be permitted, that would be in conjunction and, and uh in, in similar type of fashion to the, the apartment and condo buildings that are currently be, being built there. I also want to agree with the Mrs. Bertrand, you know, in terms of her view of uh the historic uh district of, of the town and uh the awful horrendous uh traffic that comes up Prospect Street now because of uh, you know, the, the amount of traffic that goes through there. I have two questions. One is, in a previous meeting, it was asked whether or not a traffic study would be done for the entire town. And, you know, I think the last time that we talked about this, people said that there was traffic studies being done for individual properties that were being developed, but there hadn't been a comprehensive traffic study of the entire town taking into consideration all of the new units that have come on and are proposed to be coming on uh in the future. And I think it's desperately needed because our little town is expanding and growing and uh multiplying uh exponentially. And I think, you know, it's time that we do a traffic study. Um, also parking as well. There's people mentioned earlier about the parking. Um, you know, and there's been conversations about the downtown. You know, I have driven down Albion Street many times and very rarely do I see any pedestrian traffic whatsoever on Albion Street. I see a lot of car traffic going back and forth, but very, very little pedestrian traffic, and there's been a lot of condos and uh apartment buildings be, bill, and even with those, those units, there's, there's not, has not been an increase in any pedestrian traffic whatsoever. Um, the other thing is the MBTA, you know, is, you know, is used, but it's not like it's like a, a T, which, you know, provides convenience. It's, it's a, it's a commuter rail system that has limitations in terms of its, um, you know, timing going in and out of the city. And, you know, now it goes to North Station with the development of the Seaport. There's a lot less, you know, people taking it because there's different places that have to go. It's inconvenient and there's a lot more people living in town, working in, you know, office buildings, you know, a- along one twenty-eight. Um, and someone also mentioned the, the bus, uh, you know, traffic. Uh, you know, I, it would be interesting to take a survey of the people in town, how many people in town get on the bus right now and take it to Oak Grove. It would be very quite interesting to, 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 to find out how, how many people in town are actually using public transportation um at this point. So anyway, I think we should do, you know, the bare minimum, and I think that we should, um, you know, look at the area, you know, by Foundry Street and um east of Lake Street. I think that the proposal, you know, in the, in the, in the historic district needs to be looked at. And I do think we should spread it out, you know, throughout the town and um put some of this uh in Wakefield, in uh Greenwood section as well. Um, uh, so that it's not landing all on, on the backs of the people living in this, in this neighborhood.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gaffney. Uh, next up is um RS. You wouldn't mind saying your name and your address and turning the camera on if you can.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, hi, it's Rick Stewart, one fifty-seven Salem Street. Um, I, I made a comment last uh meeting as well, and um I was listening to the comments um the presenter made and you know, here's the thing I'm looking at. It's not just what's gonna happen in April or May or this year or next year. I think what a lot of people are missing is what's coming down the road here in the next, say, seven years, because somebody had mentioned none of this counts towards affordability. Well, don't worry about it. That's the twenty thirty census. Okay, fair enough. We're gonna reduce traffic. People are gonna walk, or, you know, all these different things. There's gonna be places for people to kind of live. Well, what's the real reality, though? The real reality is if, if this is successful and a lot more people come. Everybody says no one's gonna have kids. Well, I find that hard to believe going forward. What's gonna happen to the infrastructure of this town as we continue to build and build? What's gonna happen to the infrastructure of this town as we continue to build and build? And it's not just unique to this one particular little project we're talking about here. Just today, another forty B up by Dunkin' Donuts with the multiple, you know, apartment buildings on Salem Street. All around town, they just keep coming and coming and coming. So even with this twenty-five hundred here, this doesn't stop special permits, it doesn't stop forty B. We're still gonna have all this other development continuing with the same statements. Minimum traffic, minimum impact on town services, minimum amount of kids coming in. What happens if all this is not true? What happens if the reality is, there is a lot more traffic? And there is gonna be a lot more kids, and this is not gonna be homeownership. It's gonna be rental, like overwhelmingly what we have now. What are we leading to? Where's this all taking us? Other than we wake up in twenty thirty, we need to in, you know, increase all these schools. We're already tapped out with the new high school. Why is anybody looking down the road here and saying, if this doesn't go out the way we think it is, and it changes, we're in deep trouble. Especially from a tax perspective for the people that are in here that are living in this town. Nobody's talking about that. I think that's a big problem, and a lot of things we can't change. But some of the things we can is, we can do the minimum here. And that's what we should be doing is the minimum, because we don't know what the future is gonna bring as far as what what this is gonna occur as far as housing. Not to mention that all the forty Bs still coming, all the special permits still coming. I think we're making a huge strategic uh error here by not backing off this a little bit. Let what's already been approved and being built come in and see what happens, and then move forward from there. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Um, all right, um, Ronman Delavolti. You wanna unmute and uh say your name?
Good evening, Bronwyn Delavolti, eight Cyrus Street. Um, I just wanted clarification, I believe it was said several times in the intro. Um, that nothing is going to change on this prior to town meeting, is that correct?
Uh, we, yeah, we can change, uh, we can clarify the existing language uh in the bylaw um within the meaning and the four corners of of what's uh what's written and what's proposed.
What does that mean, please?
Uh, that means if you question uh some, the wording of a sentence. Um, we could, we could make that, uh, we could clarify that language or improve it.
Okay, but the general parameters um of this are not gonna change, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's the role of town meeting to make the, to make the wholesale changes.
Okay.
Should people, our members want it.
However, I did, I do disagree with you. After the the last meeting um with as many, if not more, uh, participants uh are talking about everything that that everyone tonight has been talking about quite well and eloquently. That I personally feel i- is if it is a slap in the face to every resident in this town that this board did nothing and was not listening. Did did not take into consideration what everyone has been saying about this plan. I don't understand it. I truly don't understand it. And I also don't understand what the previous speaker uh spoke about is is longitudinally a a a approach to these things, that everything in Wakefield seems to be taken in in a, in a piecemeal fashion. With, you know, project by project, um, section by section, without the whole ever being considered. Now, maybe it is considered, I don't see it, though. But I thought for sure after the last planning board meeting on this topic that the planning board would have at least made some small uh uh change. But everyone who has spoken tonight, please save your comments, save your energy. And put it in the newspaper and talk to your friends and neighbors and get them to town meeting. Because that is where we're gonna be heard. We're obviously not being heard here. You know, we're given uh the appearance of public participation. But true public participation is a back and forth and give and take, it's more than just listening. It's incorporating the most viable um ideas and suggestions offered. And that has not happened, not happened. So I I beseech everyone on this tonight to get to town meeting and get your friends and family and neighbors to town meeting and vote this thing down. Because this is not what the town wants, um, and we're gonna be paying for it down the road. Thank you very much.
All right, uh, thank you, Ms. Delavolti. All right, uh, next up is uh Rada, Rita?
Rada.
Right, thank you, and then Eleanor Axelrod. So, all right, you've got the mic.
Hi, hi, this is Rada, Frolix Team Nine, Rushell Drive. As you all know me, I own a business downtown Wakeville. This year would be twenty years since I've been in business in Wakeville. I started in Greenwood and now downtown. My question is, uh, with a lot of people that were prior to me speaking, I agree on a lot of great points that have brought out. Thank you all so much. I have a a few questions. I I have to admit that this is the first time that I'm actually uh trying to learn about this project. So I would have some questions before I have opinion, whether I'm for it, against, and et cetera. So my question is, uh, did anybody, do we know, or is the public knowledge, or how all of our schools uh in parameter of this circle, that what is the capacity, maximum capacity of each school? We know high school is, it's, you know, and we need a new one, but I'm I'm talking about all the elementary school, Galvin School. What is the maximum capacity of students for each of these schools? And do we have a a projection number of kids in the next ten years that would be actually attending schools? In a way that we, in order to have this project, I would just, I would recommend and and it's like playing chess game, chess, making a future moves and then go backwards. So that's in a way, that's how sometime we run, I run my own business, the household. What am I doing today? And how my action and my decision will affect those possible future chess moves that are going to be affecting. So something to really logically, that's how, you know, I would recommend that this, any project in town should be approached that way. On another observation that I know in downtown Wakeville, there's not much really pedestrian. I mean, as much they should, you know, maybe there was a little bit more pedestrian when we had the outdoor cafes and stuff like that. So it's really uh entice people to be more walkable when it's nice weather. But New England is such an unpredictable, that this way it's too hot, too cold, too windy, too this, too that, as you all know. So there's not much really increase in pedestrian um downtown Wakeville, I know for sure. I also know that when I ask my customer that are walking in my store, where do you live, how do you find us, this and that. I have to tell you, maybe two customers I have from a North Ave above Tono that are, it's very walkable. I may have two people that come downtown shopping in my store. I don't know where else they go. And maybe one person, I actually know just one person from a a complex that I ca- across from Galvin School. So what I'm really afraid of also, that we are becoming a bedroom communities. Uh, meaning people just go work and, you know, come in and and blow out of there. And they don't think of us as a community to be engaged downtown and engage um like the other communities. And we actually don't have anymore any, those events that bring our community together to support our businesses. Um, that other communities around us had brought up those events that promote uh unity, promote uh local businesses, promote that walkability when you have those events in town. So I apologize, I'm a little bit of over, all over the place, but I just wanted to make those, well, whatever is worth uh for you, truly consider that um and make those chess move in the future. And I really am dying to know what's the capacity currently as of today in our local school? How many more kids can we add? And what's the capacity? I know we increased the police um a building when and and we renovated it. But what is that capacity? What is that gonna need to be done in ten years from now? And my last final question is, by adding all of these units in the last five years, I would assume we increased real estate tax and taxes. So how much of a increase did we actually get as a revenue by increasing the units? And would that, would that produce decreasing some of our real estate taxes in the future? I may be really off the wall over here about that, but I'm just curious. How much of revenue did we actually increase by adding all these multi-units um areas? So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, and uh appreciate your comments. The, I'm going to fix my phone here and invite uh Ms. Axelrod.
Hi, Eleanor Axelrod, nineteen Sheffield Road. Um, I think everybody has made some wonderful comments, um, and I acknowledge all your hard work. Um, I I know it's hard to to work um with this, but I I think again, um. I would, the current plan, I think, doesn't address some fundamental flaws in Wakefield, which is the lack of downtown traffic um and the affordability problem. I don't think building more houses, or or there's no place in Massachusetts that you can point to that creating more housing actually decreases costs. It actually does the opposite. And you start seeing in other communities like Reading, it's actually a little cheaper now to buy a comparable house than it is in Wakefield. Um, I, I also um wanted to point out that these houses will be, I I think we're all aware, market rate. It's unclear whether they'll be rental or owned. Um, so again, it's, it's, they're not gonna be rent controlled, there's an affordability issue there. I know in in um researching other towns and and talking to an architect friend, um, they took radically different approaches. Um, and I'm thinking of um Redding and um uh up in, sorry, of course, I'm having a brain fart because I'm on TV, um, up on the North Shore, they um actually examined areas around town where they wanted to do some development because it was underutilized. And they did hybrid and broke up the areas. So they did have, um, you know, approaches like, like Wakefield's, that was four or three units. But then also higher density areas that they are trying to make an affordable mandate. Um, and um have mixed use. So there are different models out there. I realize you can't change something going into town meeting, but I would hope you would consider those. I think the other approach that was a little bit different was they came up with a plan and then incorporated feedback from the public and then made, you know, they're in, making alterations to their plans before it goes to town council. And while I acknowledge that's tedious, I think it would be good to be able to actually involve the people who will be impacted. Um, I think, um, you know, as we approach this, this is a solution. You guys have expertise, you're developers, you're architects, you're urban planners. You you are coming at this with a certain framework, and I think the solution works from your perspective. But we don't really have representation of the people in this neighborhood on the planning board, on on the committee that would actually be impacted in a way that they understand it and can buy into it. Um, so I would just um suggest i- if we move forward, that you consider that approach. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much as well, I appreciate your comments. The uh councillor Mike McLean and then um Eric Wages.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, Theo. I watch about eight twenty-five, I'll try to be brief, I've made my points many times in the past.
Uh, address, I missed your street address.
Nineteen Fairmount Ave, just up the hill from the, from the current zone, nineteen Fairmount Avenue. Um, I wanna say that I'm not entirely um in agreement with some of the things that have been said. Uh, I don't think we're gonna have a greenwood section, because as you've stated, the only thing that could happen with this zone is that it gets pared down. However, I would take issue with what Mr. Hogan said. I had proposed looking at two streets, Main um Madison and Greenwood Ave. I would submit to you that there are multifamilies scattered really throughout the single-family zones in Wakefield. And if you go to the assessors databases like I do, you would, you would be able to see that. Um, there are also, conversely, there are many single families in the current zone that we are focusing on as two family as a matter of right. But that's, that's well and good and true. However, those single families could wind up becoming not single families and reducing the uh in in an expensive town, what's left of the more reasonable housing stock. Um, the forty B issue is really being overstated by, understated by your group. We do not have ten percent. Um, we will not get to ten percent in all likelihood unless we are, you know, unless we do a lot of forty B projects. We are currently battling forty B projects. The Z- ZBA is battling three Nahon Street projects because we don't have for uh ten percent. We don't have the same amount of leverage, we're trying to use a two percent safe harbor. I won't get into the details, but we'll see how that goes. Um, I think you're understating the amount of growth that could happen as a result of this district. The sixteen forty-one that you had on your chart of the current uh housing stock is estimated with tools we have available. I think that's kind of interesting. Um, these are all market rate units. We can't limit the number of bedrooms, there will be more cars. These are on four thousand square foot lot as a matter of right, as opposed to the current GR of eight thousand square foot that's required. Um, if you look at the, I don't wanna get into the grants, I think we should do the minimum district, but if you look at the grants over five years, the number goes down. It's not as high as the number you're using for three years. Most of these, I think, will probably be rentals. And there were a couple of questions I asked last meeting that weren't really answered in terms of the um bylaws. So I'm, I'm not gonna reproduce the most, save it for a town meeting. Um, I thank you for your time, I thank you for your efforts, but uh I really honestly have been doing this for months, asking you folks to do the Plan B. Now it sounds like there's gonna be a shadow Plan B, I agree with Julie Scott entirely. If there's going to be a shadow Plan B, it should be before the public. Um, maybe that's now an impossibility, but it's not the public's fault. Because this issue has been out there for a very, very long time, and we have been discussing it for months. And I've been involved in those discussions, uh, I feel that I've not been listened to, that's fine. I don't care if people agree or disagree with me, doesn't matter to me in the least. But I think you're doing a disservice to the town by going with this larger district. I said so before, I'll say it again, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McLean. Uh, next up, uh, Mr. Wages, Eric Wages.
Hi, folks, good evening, uh, Eric Wages, I uh live at twenty-two Warren down in Greenwood. Um, I just wanna say thank you all very much for your time. I I know it's, it's uh an immense mountain to go make policy and and move everything here. So just some observations, I I've been following this for quite some time. Uh, for those of you who've seen my posts online, I'm a very pro-development person. Um, I recognize that the reality of Boston is that we have a massive housing crunch, and I am philosophically for it, for everything. I welcome development in Greenwood. I would love to have more opportunities for for folks to to live here, um, as well as eat and dine and so forth. But one narrative I I I keep hearing time again, and I know it's beyond the remit of what the the planning commission's supposed to do. But um one effort that might help um placate some of the concerns that that the community has for this, I'm hearing is around enforcement, right? So there's a lot of concerns around parking, traffic. Um, my observation uh from living here now for going on four years is that enforcement has dramatically decreased on on everything regarding traffic, parking and so forth. Uh, I I worry about being T-boned at every single stoplight. Um, it it's getting kind of crazy. So I I think there's, there's an angle here. So I, I think there's, there's an angle here where talking to our, our, our law enforcement folks about heavy enforcement on some of these concerns, especially unpleasant around parking and we hear about Pearl, uh, could, could, could go ways. Um, I do also think that there's probably a discussion here, uh, again, beyond putting lines on a map, which is what the primary exercise is, but there's a policy conversation around impact assessments. Um, if, if we are really, if people feel, truly feel that we're not getting our dollars back for, um, various services for upgrading water, sewer, schools, everything else, then maybe we're not asking for the right amount, uh, for, for permits and, and impact when we're doing construction. So that's something that we should probably look at. Um, and, and then there's a philosophical conversation around, uh, whether or not you want to, uh, burden non-owner occupied, uh, spaces with, with a different tax policy. I've lived many places where if you, uh, if you are not the owner, you are taxed pretty heavily for having that. So if you are a, a vacant landlord and you're renting out space, then you are, you're, you gotta account for that and your costs. So I just want to say, kind of in summary, is that there, I think there are many things that support smart development that are beyond the remit of putting, um, you know, lines on a map here that kind of go hand in hand with this. I'd love to, to hear if there's any plans for some of these conversations to, to, to further how we do development in Wakefield, um, because I think there's a lot of concerns around not just more people because more people are going to come, but how do we actually function as a community as it stands today? There is plenty of room to improve. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, uh, thank you very much, uh, Eric. Um, are, the last hand we have up is Marcy, if you wouldn't mind, uh, unmuting and saying your name and.
Well, actually, it's Scott McCully, thirty-two Walden Road, Marcy's my one. Um, so I just wanted to say, you know, I'm, I've been following this and following this throughout Massachusetts and, uh, interestingly, the town of Milton today voted to not, not, well, not today, but voters did not go through with this. So the, the option isn't, we're gonna vote for this at town meeting or vote for a small overlay. It could be that we vote for not to do this at all. Um, I don't think what's being presented here is what this actually gonna cost the town in the long run. Um, you know, you talked about the state, uh, basically exporting us out of $3.7 million, which we otherwise would have got over like three years of potential money that were coming back to us, which is ironically because it's our own tax money we'd be getting back. But in, in this presentation, it said there was, I think, a $2 million spent on water meter upgrades on, on North Ave. You're taking twenty-five, twenty-six hundred homes in Wakefield, potentially putting them into four-unit homes on these lots. You're gonna quadruple the number of people living in this space. The new flex energy code that, for, I can't imagine, for whatever reason, people voted for, all these homes are gonna have to be all-electric. Each one of these homes is gonna have to have a parking space that's dedicated with an electric charger for a car. The infrastructure alone to this whole area over the next five to 10 years is gonna cost the town tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure cost, not to mention what it's gonna cost of extra, uh, fire department, extra police, extra schools. It's, it's insane that we're even considering this. For the, if you go by the train station now, it used to be that you couldn't even get down North Ave in the afternoon whenever it was getting out. Now it's hard to get across North Ave because we don't blow train muscles and the town rearranged the whole traffic. He's, that's crazy because people on the West Side, that's what's going to, or just go to another town shop. Now, when you get out, you can drive through there because nobody's taking the train. The MBTA ridership is down. The, the reliability of the trains is down because they break down all the time. Nobody's working in Boston anymore because of COVID, everybody works remote. So the fact that we're going through this impact for the one to 200 people that might actually use the MBTA on a daily basis, that's gonna cost the town tens of millions of dollars. It's just insane. So like somebody else said that, you know, I, I just wanted to get this out there, but call your friends, get on board and get everybody out to town meeting on this because this is insanity and this is gonna destroy this town. Where the town of Wakefield, this is turning it into the city of me. So you know what? It, it's, it's not gonna bring prices down. It's gonna drive prices up. You're gonna have people come in, develop. It's not gonna be solely just this area. And by a certain percentage, a certain time, if people aren't changed and we're on board with this, my understanding is they can go outside of this foot zone. This is, this is, this is going to be, uh, a, a few lawyers in town that, you know, come to these meetings and, and they go before the boards and they say, you know, we want to, you know, make changes here or there, change bylaws because they do it in this area and because they do it in this area. It's just going to expand. It's not gonna stay contained. It's, it's just gonna spread through town. So just opening the store is just insanity. I think that everybody should go and just vote the whole thing down. I'd rather take the chances with the $1 million lawsuit with the state than to spend $10 million of our tax money over the next 10 years just to build the infrastructure to support this. It's just insane. Traffic now is already bad downtown, trying to find a parking space and drive around. People aren't gonna walk downtown. People don't walk. We're building bike lanes everywhere. You see five bike people around town. People don't ride bikes except for in the summertime. It's, it's just insanity that we're going through all this and spending all this money on this. I know that you people have done a lot of, a lot of work on this, but the, the point of some of the people on here is that during the open and public meetings, that hasn't been taken into consideration. And despite everybody saying they don't want to do an extended overlay, you went ahead and did it anyhow. And you know, this has really pissed off a lot of people in town. And I think, you know, you need to listen to the people that do come up because it's, it's when you get closer to the vote, then the people that haven't been paid attention are really gonna come up and they're gonna shoot down all the hard work that you did. So if you pay attention to them earlier on, you have a better chance of getting things passed because you have more consensus than the town people. I think that this was, you know, I know there was a lot of effort, but I think it was a lot of wasted effort. I think the whole thing's gonna get shot downtown meeting. And I hope that it does actually. So that, that's all I wanted to say and thank you for the time.
All right, uh, thank you very much, Scott, and, um, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, tonight. I don't see any other hands raised. Is there anyone else who would care to comment at this point? Um, we've got one more, Dennis. Um, you're not unmuted yet. Where'd you go? I lost you in my list.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis Clarity, one Harvest Road. Uh, I think, um, I, I'll go against everyone here and I would say that this is a good plan. Um, you know, I was an offense viewer for about 20 years here, here in town. And, uh, zoning has only happened in the last, uh, century or so. It's a completely new thing, zoning. And before you had, uh, the offices in charge of, uh, compliant zoning, um, you could do anything you wanted on your lot as long as you stayed within your boundaries. Uh, and then they passed zoning and it's become restrictive. If you go up to Hamilton, which is right next to Beverly, Beverly is mogged. Hamilton has a, like a two-acre minimum lot size. So you know you're in Hamilton. It's on Route 1A if you wanna come up there, come up that way. Now, the reason that I say this is a good plan is because it's a balancing act between density and size. If, if you had a smaller size, you'd have to have more density. And you know, uh, as far as, uh, Milton, which was just mentioned, uh, they're, they're coming heavily after Milton. And then they're gonna make an example out of Milton. If you don't, uh, pass this, uh, lot size, um, I mean, there, there are other options. I mean, you could relax your zoning for townwide and then you qualify for, uh, uh, but you, you won't have to do 40B projects if you relax your zoning size. And as, as far as bicycle lanes coming up all over the place, um, the reason people don't ride bicycles is because it's not safe to ride bicycles. When you see, when you build the infrastructure to make it safe, you'll see a lot more bicycles. Um, interestingly enough, uh, the electric bicycles, uh, all over in California and now everyone is using scooters. And when you build the infrastructure, you'll see a lot more scooters than bicycles. Thank you for your time and I appreciate, you know, what the planning board is doing.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Um, I, I appreciate your comments and everyone else's tonight. Uh, last call, um, any other comments, uh, tonight? Fantastic. Um, all right, I'm going to, uh, turn it back over to Jim and Bill to, uh, summarize what, uh, what we've heard and, uh,
Sorry, Mr. Chair, that's Jim and Matt. I wasn't on the subcommittee group, but I do not mind commenting on stuff that I can't help.
Um, right, right.
Uh, Mr. Spalding, I, I'd ask you, I, and then we had a question related to the energy code that you volunteered to address. Uh, if it's okay with Mr. Share, I would advocate that you address that comment and then I'll go through the other elements.
Well, I am not an authority on this. Um, the architecture I practice is not residential, um, as my prime, um, service, but the 2023 stretch energy code and the municipal opt-in specialized building code is a little bit different. So what I understand from the presentations from our town in what was approved at town meeting, and again, I haven't practiced in this yet, so I haven't gotten into the details. Um, but I'm gonna share what I know. So yes, for new construction, commercial development in Wakefield, the municipal opt-in specialized building code will be required for multifamily housing units. I think it's above four will be required. I'm not positive about that. Um, that's what I would need to research and find out. The specialized code, um, limits. Um, I want to make sure this is correct, but it's, it's not applying to single-family residential additions. It will apply to new homes. And Aaron, if you want to jump in, because I'm, I'm looking back from my notes from, hmm, the summertime. Um, it's a little scratchy. Low-rise residential buildings, um, electrical heating and cooling. Um, yes, they're expensive. The infrastructure is expensive to pull together, but the hers rating is what's going to probably add the most cost. I believe the hers rating of 45 or 42, depending on the square footage, will end up increasing the cost of building materials for insulation, for windows, for other, um, pieces and parts that will be required. Um, the hope is that with that, using less energy to heat and cool a building. Um, and yes, as mentioned earlier, the, the infrastructure to, um, bring this up to, to requirements for the specialized energy code will cost the town some money. And that's something that can be applied for, for funding, for grants, and that's something that Aaron Kolkinda has been working on. Uh, the other prescribed methods and performance-based methods and getting into the details, uh, with the hers and the passive house, that's something that takes a long time to understand. And that's something that you can find. You can go to mass.gov and the 2023 stretch energy code, if you want to search for that, it will give you those details. If you are planning to build a new home or build a commercial building or creating an addition larger than the footprint of the actual home, um, you should talk to the building inspector and find out more details before moving forward because they're gonna give you the correct information on what they will be inspecting for once your, um, your dwelling or the commercial building is, um, built. So I think, Jim, I don't know if that's really what we need to do to answer, um, share to answer, but again, mass.gov, residential, mess.gov, stretch energy code and the municipal opt-in, this is the specialized building code. It's not the stretch code. So my understanding is, and this is again from the presentations this past summer, that, and what we voted on at town meeting, and I did vote in favor of this, um, that historically marked buildings will not be required for the specialized building code, but still for the stretch code. If they were added on to more than the footprint of the building, but not just for general or interior renovations, none of that will trigger to be up to the specialized building code. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, uh, Mr. McCully, um, I see you've got your hand raised again. Um, if you're speaking direct specifically to the, the energy code, um, I'd entertain, uh, uh, quick observation or comments if you can.
I am actually, and just to clarify a few things, because I'm at the town meeting and I asked specifically to the building inspector, who could not answer this at the time, but did allude to this could be the possibility that, um, existing construction, uh, say you had a firing your home and you needed to rebuild a portion of your home that, uh, over a certain percentage of renovation, your home would, would then create it to be, uh, new construction and you will be forced into be into this extended. So if, if any of these buildings, even if they're going from a single to a double, uh, in unit, then the extent of the construction and that would put that into what would be considered new construction, they'd be forced to go into this extended stretch energy code.
Yeah.
I just wanted, that's my understanding.
Yep, and again, if you go to mass.gov, it has the information here. And I have to correct what I said earlier. The historic buildings are exempt from both the stretch code and the base energy code as well as the specialized. So just wanted to make sure I corrected that. I found that in my notes as well. Um, and just not to be wise or anything, but I'm in Boston five days a week. I use a commuter rail with hundreds of other people at the seven thirty-six train from Wakefield. Um, super crowded, um, Oak Grove Stop makes a difference. One thirty-seven bus I've taken many times when I've missed the train. And I bike to work. I bike to work today. I biked to work and did 4,400 miles last year biking from Wakefield to Boston. So I'm not alone. There's many people that do that. So I just wanted to correct you on your misunderstanding or assuming that people aren't doing it.
Okay, uh, you know, I think that this, that's a great spot to leave the conversation around the stretch energy code. I, you know, I think we've heard a number of people express concerns related to how this impact would impact the historic, any historical buildings within the downtown area, specifically on, around church and Lafayette Streets. We've heard a number of concerns related to parking and the impacts of any additional development on parking in this downtown area and the associated information with traffic. We had a question that I heard related to whether or not a townwide traffic study had been collated for, as part of this planning effort. And a townwide traffic study has not been included as part of this. As many folks can appreciate, this is a, traffic studies take time and money that were not included when the state came up with this as a requirement. So the, the resources to go hire a consultant to conduct a traffic study was not something that had, that was available to the planning members of the working group or the planning board to try to come up with this district to comply with it. In terms of the schools, there was some information that was collated regarding the school enrollment and I'll flip over to that as part of the backup that's available on our website. Um, oh, I apologize, this is an old, old version of our presentation, but the, oh, sorry, I apologize. This is it. So in general, as it relates to schools, we pulled together the information from the Wakefield Housing Forum. So this is from a couple of years ago because that's what the housing forum was held, but the information seemed like it was the most relevant without going and redoing that analysis. And in general, you can see the multifamily district that the, that special permit was passed in the early 2010s and we've seen a, uh, a leveling off of school enrollment around the 2017 area, despite the, the new construction that's been delivered. There was a dip in 2020, which may or may not be representative based on the fact that it was impacted by COVID. But in general, we've seen on the high school level, uh, kind of a leveling off over the last handful of years. Uh, with that being said, obviously, I think that's something that as we continue to progress as a community, if we do do separate planning efforts that are generated by the town, that would be something that would be incorporated into that. But again, this is something that, because we, we took the information that was available to the working group in order to collate that for people to reference from the work, the housing forum. Specifically related to conversations around the model of compliance. So when the working group looked at alternative methods, there was a feeling among the group and if. there was a feeling among the group, and if people disagree on the policy, that's that's a separate conversation. Or sorry, that's part of this conversation, but the word felt as if that members of the community would be more impacted by having higher density units allowed as of right, going super high comparatively allowing ten or twenty units, so we could have an affordability component included. The word felt as if that was more appropriate for our special permit process where the town has more of the say, more of an ability to conduct a review that has, for lack of a better term, a little more teeth associated with it. So that's why the working group identified a model of a wider area with a lower density, try to minimize the impact on the neighborhood character by creating more housing that would be the same size of the existing buildings that exist. Again, people can disagree with that, but that was the thought process. In terms, I heard one person request information as it relates to how the delivery of new housing impacts pricing associated with with new units. So, you know, I think the level of impact that we're talking about for a district of this scale for Wakefield, but then if you look at it more globally, Boston region is not going to this, you know, the passage of this zoning district is not going to move housing prices down. However, small steps such as this, taken by a number of communities, which would allow for the development of housing in planned thoughtful ways, over time will have the ability to curb the increases of housing we've seen. You've seen in Minnesota recently, you know, about five years ago, they passed a much more in-depth zoning reform that allowed triple deckers essentially across the entirety of that town as of right and a whole host of other reforms. And since then, they've seen a spike of their housing stock by sixteen percent, and their prices have leveled off comparative to their peer communities in Minnesota, which have seen housing basically at relatively consistent levels, and their prices continue to rise. It's not something you really see that often, because you don't see that level of zoning reform very often at all. But study after study shows delivery of new housing units slow down increases in pricing. It makes sense, supply and demand. If you don't build any new housing, prices are going to continue to go up. It's why the state has identified this as a mechanism to try to address this housing problem. If you look from nineteen ninety till now, those thirty years, our housing production has been half of what it was from nineteen sixty to nineteen ninety, and our economy is much stronger. So our housing prices got up four times that we've seen. Work consistently, a low permitting state compared to other states in the country. And so we have low supply, high prices. So that's fundamentally the the comment that more housing creates higher prices over the long term, the way that we're going to address housing crisis by delivering more housing. I heard some comments from a gentleman related to impact statements and traffic enforcement in terms of things that the planning board should look at as we're trying to manage development going forward. While those are valid things to consider, I think traffic enforcement's outside of the purview of the planning board and the and this this effort. But I think we can talk to Aaron and relay those concerns to Wakefield Police. And then impact statements, it's a it's a good question, and it's something that we, if we were to do a higher level zoning or rezoning effort would be something that maybe a bit the ability to look at specifically related to our special permits. We're granting zoning relief, but that would be something that we can look at as as a separate effort. You know, I know a number of people have expressed concern that, you know, the working group and the planning board are not listening. I think that the working group and the planning board are doing their best to try to balance a number of competing interests in order to create something that makes sense for the town and is good planning that those two bodies that were identified by leadership to evaluate how best for Wakefield to to comply with the state and make the best of the state mandate. And this is what the group came up with, and it'll be up to the voters at town meeting to determine if they agree or disagree. And we've tried to listen as best we can, and I know people don't necessarily perceive that. But we're, we've tried to craft this in a way that is balancing a number of different competing interests and different competing goals and objectives. There's reasons why we we tried to not go with Greenwood in terms of the overall impact. Again, people can thoughtfully disagree, and I think a lot of people have. And that's the value of debate at town meeting. And, you know, I think a number of people said it, but look forward to town meeting, forward to being able to debate this and let the town decide what they think of this proposal.
Other comments that have come up over the course of the the public hearing related to affordability and and forty B and some of some of the the other ramifications. Points appreciated and and received. Any other summary comments to make regarding the public hearing?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just, yeah, it was Foundry Street brought up, brought up, Jim, did I miss that?
Yes, Foundry Street was brought up, and I apologize. I addressed it during the presentation, but as a reminder, Foundry Street, you have the way that the law works, and I apologize, I'm getting into too much of the weeds for folks, but you have to take the existing lots that exist today, and you have to use those as part of this compliance model. So large lots, you can't go in and chop them up in order to have them count for multiple units. You have to take the lot that exists as it currently exists today. And then depending on how many units you allow as of right under the law, that allow that impacts how many units you can count towards that minimum. And so for the large, large lot on Foundry Street, where you see like the large developments that exist today, if you include that and you have it, so it's four units as a right similar to the rest of the district, that average density plummets, and then you go from having a zone that works to a zone that doesn't work. So there is, there are provisions in the law that would allow you to have a piecemeal approach where you could have sections that are hived off and have significantly higher densities allowable, and then sections where you have lower densities, as long as you had a blend of the two, you could get to compliance. When the working group looked at it, we thought that it, that wasn't the best approach for Wakefield, because if you zoned Foundry Street and you made it so it's all as of right, higher density, then it restricts the amount of control the town has going through the special permit process. So you could have, you know, the number of comments and the back and forth that occurs at the ZBA that makes projects better for the town and better suited. You lose that ability when you go with a site plan approval. So for larger projects, the policy decision was made to try to make it so larger projects would still be subject to those design review and that local control.
Very helpful. Mr. Dusenberry.
Can I just add one more thing to that?
Thank you. I I lost you. Great.
My video went off. I just wanted, this is Aaron Kokinda from the town of Wakefield. I just think one other thing that I'd like to explain to the compliance model and mapping. You know, I think I said this at the last meeting, specifically Foundry, but there's other areas that are excluded as part of this compliance model and mapping exercise based on excluded land, which includes wetlands, DEP land, also public land that they will not allow you to include that land as towards your total housing count. Unfortunately, you know, we did like Jim to alluded to, we did talk about Foundry Street many times, and half of that street is basically excluded. So we, with the state model, could not include half of Foundry Street. So it'd be the closer half, which again, would take away from the dwelling units per acre. Our acreage would go down too, because that acreage would not be able to be included. So that's more like the data side of things. But I just wanted to make sure that that point was given as well as why Foundry Street wasn't. The whole of the street of Foundry wasn't looked into a little more, but but just wanted to add that point as well.
Thank you very much, Aaron. I appreciate that clarification. Mr. Dusenberry, do you have a question specifically to this discussion?
Yes, Foundry Street in particular. We can have a zone, a sub-district with much higher density. I don't see anything in the code, in the, in what I've read about lot sizes needing to conform to the existing lot configuration. But I'll take it that you have seen something that I have not. Nevertheless, why on earth would we not take credit for what's already happened on Foundry Street? I mean, we are doing it. The town is doing it. And why not have a high-density sub-district incorporating the properties that have already been developed and whatever else along Foundry Street can be developed? Literally, there are like two hundred and fifty units in the building that is at the corner of Albion and Foundry.
Yeah.
And the other two buildings that are under, one nearly finished, the other under construction. Why not count those? It's exactly what the state is trying to make us do. Do it. And you will reduce the size of the land elsewhere that needs to be subjected to this.
Yeah, so, all right, thank you very much. The question being, I feel like we've, we've received this, and we've, we've addressed why Foundry Street really can't be part of the way Aaron has described, part of, part of the calculus. The point, yeah, Aaron.
I was just going to add too, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, Mr. Dusenberry, but I might, I may be, but we cannot include units that have already been developed. That was something that a lot of towns, including myself and other planners at other communities gave pushback at the beginning, saying, you know, we've done all this work, why can't we include what the work that we've done? And the state was pretty clear. And sorry, I see your hand raised, so if you have a follow-up to that, but but and then also to the Foundry, what I just said is half of the street, which is basically the south part of the street, according to the maps and with DEP wetlands and things like that with Crystal Lake right there, cannot would those, those parcels would not be included.
I'm not asking to include the the units that are already built there. I'm saying create zoning on those lots that mimics what's already there. And include a sub-district with a much higher density than the what you're trying to achieve elsewhere and recognize that that's the type of construction that is likely to occur on Foundry Street, or in fact, already has occurred. I'm not asking you to count them.
Okay.
That is equivalent to them.
Yes, I just misunderstood you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Eleanor, you did raise your hand. This is, I think, going to be our last comment, if you have one. You're still muted. I'm having trouble hearing.
I'm going to take this off and and chance the dog barking. Aaron, thank you for addressing that. I had emailed you offline. I think it'd be really helpful to put a map of these impacted areas that are off the table, because we keep asking about them. I had emailed Aaron knew the map that I found on the surface waters, and it was just the edge of Foundry. So again, I think it's helpful for us. We're used to, you know, looking at certain resources available to the town and the DEP website. It'd be really helpful if there's some new model that you guys are using to please post it on the planning board website, so we could look at that. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Eleanor, if you email me, I I don't think I saw it, but why don't we follow up offline and I'll.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Certainly. A good suggestion about access to information. Attorney Brian McGrail. And then I I think, yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add some information for everybody, for everybody's benefit. So some folks tonight have talked about maybe the potential of just going to town meeting and voting no and foregoing the opportunity for for grants. What are we going to lose a million dollars or whatever? And the Attorney General has actually come out with a an advisory concerning enforcement, and and I think this is important to state, and I'll read in part from that advisory that one of my legal groups that I subscribe to supply me with, it says, all MBTA communities must comply with the law. Communities that do not currently have a compliant multifamily zoning district must take steps outlined in the guidelines to demonstrate compliance. Communities that fail to comply with the law may be subject to civil enforcement action. Noncompliant MBTA communities are also subject to administrative consequences of being rendered ineligible to receive certain forms of state funding. Importantly, MBTA communities cannot avoid their obligation under the law by foregoing this funding. The law requires that MBTA communities shall have a compliant zoning district and does not provide any mechanism by which a town or city may opt out of this requirement. MBTA communities that fail to comply with the law's requirements also risk liability under the federal and fair federal and state fair housing laws. The Massachusetts Anti-Discrimination Law and the Federal Fair Housing Act prohibit towns and cities from using their zoning power for discriminatory purpose or for a discriminatory effect. An MBTA community may violate these laws if, for example, its zoning restrictions have the effect of unfairly limiting housing opportunities for families with children, individuals who receive housing subsidies, people of color, people with disabilities or other protected protected groups. And that's, that's right from the advisory it was issued. So I just wanted to make that clear that, and I think this is what Milton is going through now, that there's actually been a lawsuit that's been filed, and I'm sure that probably some of these allegations or aspects are there. But it's not like we as a community can just say, hey, let's just vote no, walk away from this, and we'll just deal with the fallout on funding. Because I think a lawsuit that would follow would actually seek specific performance, forcing the town to do it, and perhaps forcing something on upon the town by having a court implement a district that we really wouldn't like. So I just wanted to put that out there, because I think that's an important thing that folks should understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGrail. And with that, it is almost ten after nine. We're approaching the the two-hour mark. Jane, I see you've raised your hand, unless this is specifically related to this enforcement language that is new and requires more attention and learning about that we don't have time for tonight. I'm I'm gonna I'm gonna ask that that we, for a motion to close, but if you've got a specific comment, a question, now's the time. Okay. Well.
Hi.
Yeah, thirty seconds.
Yep. Voting down the, may not be the best thing to do, and I understand that. But I think that there's a lot of people that are very concerned with the access beyond what's required. That will add a hundred and fifty more structures that have to be put into this area, which is already extremely lots of traffic, parking issues, et cetera. If it doesn't get passed this town meeting and that we work towards a different setup in in the circle, it can go again to town meeting in the fall. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
So our situation's a little different than Milton, because Milton did it by voting in an elective vote, whereas we're doing it through a town meeting. Is that correct?
Someone, yeah. So the the difference is that Milton is one of the communities that was required to comply with the law by the end of twenty twenty-three, because they are they are serviced directly by the rapid transit.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about that. I understand that component. My mine is if we don't pass it this time in town meeting on April twenty-ninth, we have the opportunity which to go back to town meeting with a different map and vote again, do we not?
Yes, that is. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so if we don't pass it, that doesn't mean that right away. We should assume that we're going to have a lawsuit against us. And I don't want people to assume that if they don't vote for this, we're gonna have to face a lawsuit, correct?
If we do not pass it at the spring town meeting, so long as we pass a compliant map at the fall town meeting, we will not face a lawsuit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
May I make a motion based on the, the public comments that we've heard today and at the last meeting? Make a motion to close this public hearing formally.
All right. Motion is received, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Matt. All right, all in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Jim Hogan?
Yes.
And Kevin York?
Yes.
And myself, Theo Noel, yes. This is, we can't, we can't thank everyone enough for. The time and attention to the issue and, and everyone's participation. Now and, and in the past, and. As other people have said, we're really grateful for the, the service and the commitment of. Everyone of the. On the working group and town staff. For the, for the attention that's been given and, and will be given, so.
Well, Theo, we have a, another step to go through still. So, we need to vote on whether the planning board will favorably recommend this or not. So, we wanna do that at this meeting, or do we wanna do that at a separate, another meeting?
My. My inclination was to do that at a separate meeting, and I would. Given, given our workload for the twelfth, I think. Having the opportunity to. Process what we've heard. Review. Any alternative map or other considerations that, that we may be able to. Address, I, I would think we'd wanna do that at the March twenty-sixth meeting.
So.
That motion.
If I may ask, what is this? Discussion of an alternative map, what? What is the thought process on this? Cause it's, it's new to me, so.
Yeah, so Matt, I can take that. So, based on the conversations after the last. Meeting, myself and chairperson Noel met with. Aaron, as well as other members of town staff. And they provided a recommendation that we, as the planning board. Evaluate an alternative map that could be compliant, that would be lesser. That could be used as the basis of a alternative. If, if, because you have to vote on a specific map. If someone were to make a motion on the floor of town meeting, the thought process is if you come up with a map that's been. Pre-evaluated for compliance with the state. That that would be the mechanism to facilitate that conversation. So I don't think it's, it's not fully baked, and I can defer to Aaron in terms of the development of that map. But what I would propose that we do as a planning board is we. Take the alternative minimum maps that Aaron's looking at and we evaluate them. And I, I don't think that my recommendation would be anyone from the planning board would endorse that map, but if other members. Of the public who. Depending on what we, if we vote to endorse the, the map that's currently proposed. If another member of the public were to elect to propose a smaller minimum map, there would be something that would be votable at the town meeting.
So it would, someone would need to make a floor change and use this. Minimum map that, that the planning board basically puts together.
Correct, so someone, some, a member of the public would need to make a floor of emotion. But because the way that the zoning law works, for members of the public who don't understand. You, if you make a motion on the floor, you have to have a specific map that would be the basis of said motion. So we're trying to do the. Come up with. A map that would make sense. Based on the conversations that have been had as part of the working group and part of conversations with the planning board. So it would be something that would be ready if someone were to elect to make that motion.
Okay. I, all right, I guess we will have this discussion at a future meeting. I don't wanna get into it too much right now, but, okay.
Appreciate the clarification, all right. Very good, and again, thank you to everyone, thank you to the members of the board and town staff. We're going to move to the next item on our agenda. Is item four, it's continuing our discussion, the preliminary subdivision plan of one fifty-four and one fifty-eight Salem Street.
And. Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
Thank you for the record attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant on this preliminary subdivision plan in L and L. What are the two entities, the, of the owners of one fifty-four and one fifty-eight Salem Street. With me tonight is Nick Leo. Who is principal of the two entity owners and also Rich Williams from Williamson Sparages, our, our engineering firm. We've been before you a couple of times on this, and again, it's only a preliminary subdivision plan, which. Is non-binding on, on either party, but it provides some feedback on, on us moving forward towards a definitive plan. And you suggested we continue this, so we had an opportunity to. Meet with the town engineer with Aaron Kokinda. Because Mr. Renaud had sent a memorandum to your board on February thirteenth, which was, was, I think, the day of your meeting. That we last talked about this, and so we really didn't have a chance to respond. We did have a chance to, he had a very difficult schedule with school vacation week baked into it, but we did have a chance finally. To meet with him. On, I believe it was Friday or in the Thursday of Friday, so we, we just met with him last Thursday. And he had some specific comments that we went over with him, Mr. Chair, and if, and if I may, I'd like to kinda. Refresh your memory on those comments and then provide you what the, what we came up with in talking to Mr. Renaud on those questions.
That would be very welcome.
I think I can kinda summarize it for you. So, the first one was. We had requested in our preliminary plan to reduce our road width to forty feet. And as you know, we're proposing four lots in the subdivision. And Mr. Renaud had said, and we talked a little bit about this with you, with, I think at the first hearing. He requested what he called a proof plan. Which I call the yield plan. To, to show that geometrically, if we did do a fifty-foot layout, that we would still be able to have four lots. So we did that for Mr. Renaud, and I'm gonna, and we went over this with him. And I'm gonna share this plan with you that was just finalized today pursuant to our discussions with Mr. Renaud. And this is the plan with the fifty-foot layout, which shows that it easily meets the requirements. All lots have over twelve thousand square feet. The one in the industrial district is way over forty-one thousand. Each lot meets the required frontage. And each lot meets the required lot shape without even requiring a waiver from the planning board. So Mr. Renaud had an opportunity to review this with us, and he agreed that it, it addressed his concern on that or his question on that.
Great. Okay. And you'll be able to circuit.
Yeah.
Provide that to us.
Yep. Yep, I just got the final plan late this afternoon, so I'll send that to Aaron.
Okay.
And. So, you know, that's why one of the things that we had discussion was, you know, why have this, you know, fifty-foot wide right away Logan Airport runway. In the area, it should be shrunk down to forty feet wide, which is a pretty standard waiver that the board has given in the past. So that was the first question. The second related to site distance, and we talked about site distance. What Mr. Renaud, and we agreed was that we're gonna have to have a traffic engineer take a look at that. To determine our compliance, we're pretty confident that it won't be an issue, but it's really a traffic engineer question, so. We agreed in talking to him that that will be something that will be tabled. That, you know, site distance will be looked at during, during the definitive process.
Okay.
And that kinda leads into. The crosswalk issue that the board had asked us to talk to him about. Because we had, at, at an earlier meeting, we had talked about the fact that the sidewalks on Salem Street are on the other side of the street, so. The board was contemplating whether you wanted to have full sidewalks within this roadway, none, or just on one side of the cul-de-sac. Going down on one side of the proposed roadway. We were pleasantly pleased to find out in our meeting with Mr. Renaud. That when Salem Street is repaved, there are going to be sidewalks on this side of Salem Street. Which was great news, and they're gonna lead all the way down to the bike path, and then they're also gonna head in the other direction towards Lowell Street. So, as he said, there's no need for us to have a crosswalk here, because we'll be able to connect right to a sidewalk on our side of the street going in both directions. So we were thrilled with that, and, and Erin can confirm that, she participated in that meeting. And the ti- the timing is excellent, because that's all gonna occur, I think, Aaron, within like probably the next six months.
Correct. That's what Bill and Tim said, yep.
Yep, so he was good, he was glad to know what we were planning here, because then he can kinda, you know, deal with accordingly how he's gonna blend the sidewalks. Then he required an eight-inch water main, we were showing a six, because the current. Records of the town show a six out in Salem Street, but he informed us that. As part of the national grid work out there, a new eight-inch main was put in Salem Street, so it is an eight-inch main. So it only makes sense that we would have an eight-inch main, so that, that will be revised in the definitive plan. We, we agree on that. And then he talked about the possibility of. Creating water main loop. We talked to him that we wouldn't have a problem with that, we would need some cooperation from other private property owners. And, you know, i- if that happened, we would, we would do it, but if not, he agreed, there's nothing we can do about that, and it's not mandatory, it would just be a good thing to have. So we'll, we'll explore that further in the definitive process. We talked about stormwater management, Rich Williams and Mr. Renaud talked in a different language than me. As a kind of a layperson in that area, but they talked about setback requirements from the wetlands for. In, in, in different aspects. And they agreed on how the design will have to be, as you know, that design will take place during the definitive process, it never takes place during the preliminary process. But they're on the same page as far as how that has to go.
All right.
And then lastly, the stormwater management guidelines and requirements. They talked about that, which we know we have to comply with. This is gonna have, you know, stormwater management compliance, and, and. He, he just reiterated to Rich on the town's policies on their standards. And Rich Williams acknowledged it, Rich and, and Williamson Sparages has done, have done a number of projects in Wakefield, so they're familiar with that, and again, that's a definitive. That's a definitive process. The definitive component that will be done with the definitive subdivision plan. And those were the issues in his memo. So, you know, I, I think, you know, what we're looking for is, is, is really the board's feedback on. The roadway width and sidewalks, I think, because that's kinda what we would like to know when we go to our definitive plan. So we design properly for drainage studies, et cetera, based on, you know, what we're gonna have for payment in previous area.
All right. It's a good starting point for.
Can I, can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, yes.
In our discussion with the town engineer. He did mention that he thought it would be better to, on our street, have sidewalk on one side. And possibly, you know, give to the. I, I don't know if it's called the sidewalk fund, but the fund. In lieu of the, the piece that we're not building.
Thank you, Rich, for reminding me of that, 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 his, he, he said if he had a vote, he would only want a sidewalk on one side of the new street. And that he would, as part of the process, ask us to make a contribution where. You know, as you know, we're doing the bike and pet plan, that they could use that funding to put sidewalks in other, other areas of town where it would be more needed.
And, and not any sidewalk on Lot One?
He didn't say which side, he just said, you know, on one of, just, it, it would start kind of in the middle of the cul-de-sac to get people on from the cul-de-sac and then go either way.
It, it would make sense to put it on the side of two, three, and four.
Sure.
Lot One will have a sidewalk adjacent to it on Salem Street, so they would have access to a sidewalk and. And all of the lots in that case would have access to the sidewalk.
Yeah, Lot One fronts onto the, the new, the cul-de-sac though.
Yeah, that makes sense, Richard, you would have a sidewalk on Lot Four and Three and Two, and One has one already on Salem Street, Two does also, but. It would allow Lot, Lot Three to have sidewalk right in front of their property.
All right. Happy to hear any comments, reaction from. Board members?
I, I can go first.
Sure.
My, my inclination is that the. I, I would be in favor of. A plan that envisioned a. Narrower forty-foot width road. On the basis that I, I think it, there's a benefit to the town. And the potential future homeowners of these lots to have less. Per, previous pavement from a water management perspective. You know, in order to reduce the amount of runoff and try to keep as much. Soil or water that falls down in the, in the groundwater in that, that area. Additionally, I do concur with the town engineer, if I were to vote. If, if you're telling me that there's, if there's a specific pot of money, and you can spend it on. Putting sidewalks on both sides or putting sidewalks on one side and then. Taking that money and giving it to the town engineer at his discretion to add sidewalks in other higher-touch areas. I, I think that makes a lot of sense from my perspective, if, as you guys are crafting the balance of this proposal. And besides that, I think all the other things are the typicals, as you go and start doing the definitive. That we always talk about, making sure that we have the tree survey. Such that we can make sure that the, that we're not arguing about that during the, you know, during the, the actual. Definitive plan, you know, for the existing trees that exist there. As well as, you know, the clearly demarcation, the scope of work. In order to make sure that that's as clear as possible, especially given that you have a, a large chunk of this site that you're not really gonna be. For all intents and purposes utilizing due to the wetlands. And some of those other, you know, that. I'm sure that this team, as, that's come before our board before, you know, just care to make sure that all that, I'll say the, the usual suspect comments. Are addressed, so we're not having to rehash all that again.
Yeah. That's well said. Thank you. Other board members?
If, yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak up.
Sure.
I do feel, I'm, I'm glad to see that the town engineer is. Accepting or allowing. One side for the sidewalk, because we've done this before, and I believe it's in the best interest of the amount of. Paved surfaces that we have, I would. Like to see less paved service, surfaces, and I do agree. That it seems like Lot Two, Three, and I'm not sure how far you would need to go into Four. But that's something to review as this plan gets developed, I would like to see that. The sidewalk, sidewalk is only. Only needs to go as far as that Lot Four, and as, as shared, Lot One has access on Salem Street. And just to reiterate what. Jim Hogan mentioned, it's good to see plans that have all the standard stuff done, so thank you, I appreciate that.
There's gonna be a, what, a small multifamily property on Lot Four, right?
That's what we're contemplating, you know, there's no, we're, we're contemplating. You know, something low level, maybe some townhouses.
Okay.
In the industrial district, but that's not by right that, you know, so there's a lot of permitting here, because it has to, you know, first you have a subdivision, and then that will require. That would require, you know, more, more, more permitting to do that, so. You know, the other option back there is, is, you know, an industrial use, it's owned industrially. You know, the other option back there is, is, you know, an industrial use, it's owned industrial and, and, you know, he's looked at doing something like that, but it really, that really doesn't work well. With the, with, you know, with the residential. Lots up front and then, you know, the residential area that it leads out to, you have Nablus. Nablus has like a warehouse, it has that industrial. And, you know, our goal isn't to add to that, you know, Nick has talked about this, we've talked to an architect. We'd like something, you know, something low impact, it really won't be able to see it from Salem Street, it'll be kind of up back. And that's why we thought townhouses, it was thought that a garden type building really wouldn't fit into this area. It, we want those townhouses to have more like a single family home element to them. Theo, if I could speak too. So. In theory, I am. Sort of in favor of a smaller roadway, but. We do have a lot of issues on here that still need to be worked out, so I don't want to. At this point, commit to, yeah, you can go with the forty foot and not have sidewalks everywhere. It's a lot's gonna depend on which way these. Buildings are gonna face, if they're gonna be facing onto the new roadway or if they're gonna be facing onto Salem Street. How many units can be put on lot four? You know, we heard potentially twenty units, that's quite a few cars, so. We wanna, I wanna keep the options open as to. As this develops that we have some flexibility to. Request some. Some commitments, so it's nice that the, there is a new provision that. Sidewalk money can be offset and used other places, I don't think it's been. Carried out anywhere yet, but this is a new process that's coming up, but that's good. One of the things, as you know, I'm gonna be. Looking at is that. Any of these new roadways that go in on existing lots. I don't want what I call is the Montreux School effect is the walling off of the existing street and people putting six foot fences up and. And, and basically. Making a little enclave there and walling yourself off to the rest of the neighborhood, so. I'm gonna be looking at, at things like that. And I'll be wanting to get some commitments on it, so. So, I, I'm not ready at this point to say, yeah, go ahead with forty foot. Right away and, and no sidewalks everywhere, but let's see how the plans develop. Well, I can tell you this, just from, you know, from another project that. That I'm involved on, you know, what, what, I think what Nick said is he'd be probably looking at a maximum of twenty back there. And what you're looking at with that size project is in AM peak hours is seven vehicle trips. And in. In PM, you're looking at eight, uh, six. So, you know, with, with that type of project, you're not looking at a significant traffic generator that would impact the width of the road, Matt. No, what, what I'm more concerned about is, is people filling up that cul-de-sac with parking. Not have enough parking on the, on the multifamily. And, and everyone parking in the cul-de-sac and we've all got down cul-de-sacs where people have parked everywhere and. Nobody can turn around in them, so. That's gonna be one of my issues, maybe having a no parking street or something potentially, so. You know, there's options here that we can look at, I wanna, I wanna keep those options open.
That point's well taken. Kevin, do you have any comments? At, at this point?
Yeah, I, I think what Matt says makes sense on a, a lot of friends to keep our options open at this point, I'm not opposed to the smaller forty foot roadway. But would like to, to leave some room for flexibility there, I, I like the sidewalk fund that the town engineer brought up. And I think it does make sense in this instance. To just have sidewalks on one side of the street and, and put that money toward other parts of town that are more heavily trafficked.
Thank you, I, I would agree with, with all the comments received. RS has a hand raised, but I do not think RS is part of. This, this group or this discussion, so I'm.
I, I just have a quick question, if that's okay.
Um, no, it's actually not.
Well, I'll direct a button to this at one fifty-seven, I haven't been notified of any of this. So I, I haven't.
I, I can speak from the town's perspective, you would not be notified of this, this is again, just a preliminary subdivision where the applicant and. Right now, his attorney come in front with the planning board to see if the plan is even feasible to move forward to go to a definitive subdivision, so nothing is set in stone yet. When there is a definitive subdivision, that is when you will be notified.
So when all this is already agreed to, that's when all the abutters find out?
No, 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 right now, we're in the preliminary subdivision, so again, preliminary, looking at the, the, the subdivision. If it's even feasible to be built. For them, the applicant to take the next step to do a definitive, that's when they would have the public hearings where the public could voice. Any concerns that they may have, that is when you'll be notified of those public hearings.
I guarantee you, there's gonna be a lot of people in this neighborhood that's gonna have a big problem with this.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, always good to clarify preliminary versus definitive, thank you, Erin. Attorney McGrail, are you? Looking for a form, an approval of the preliminary plan at this point, or what, what are the next steps?
Yeah, I mean, you know, under the statute, you know, the, the. Basically, the, the board has some options, you, you can approve it, you can approve it with conditions and comments, you could, you know, as we discussed. You could deny it, again, it doesn't mean anything. So it's, it's really up to you, we really just wanted to get your comments, you know, I think. I think it's important to stress, and I think you know this as the planning board. And we talked about this, that what we're, what we, what we're. This is a preliminary and we're going to be applying for a definitive subdivision, the definitive subdivision is a by right event. So if we meet your rules and regulations for design. There is no denial, you have to approve it. And, you know, and we've demonstrated and we're confident we can demonstrate, we can put the fifty foot right away and we can put all the sidewalks in. We can put the bells and whistles in. And perhaps we should just do that and it can be a pretty short hearing and it will be approved because it has to be approved, if it's not, the planning board knows what happens, it will be approved at a different level. So, you know, I, I, it, it puts us in a, we, we have to design this. And from an economic standpoint, you know, my client's gonna have to, he doesn't want to have to design it twice. To design it as a forty foot and then say, oh, that doesn't work there in the hearing and then he's have to go back and spend more money. On different drainage studies and engineering and. So it put, we're, it's a little bit of an awkward circumstance. You know, for us to make that determination and, and I think it's awkward for the board too, because I totally respect the comments of board, Matt, I respect what you're saying and I understand it. So we, we're just gonna have to kind of figure that out. But it's good that we know where you're coming from, Rich, do you have anything to add on that or any ideas? How we navigate that issue from a design perspective where you're gonna be designing this? Is it that much of a big deal, Rich, to design it as, you know, a forty and a fifty to kind of give a couple of choices or is that like a, you know, what's involved?
You know, obviously, we'd prefer to, to be designing based on what the, what we expect the final product to be, because if we're. Including extra pavement and all that, then. Stuff's gonna be overdesigned. And on the flip side, if we're, we're designing for forty feet in one sidewalk. And it's decided, we, we need to go to fifty, then. Then it's a, then it's a redesign as well.
I think that's, I think it's, I think it's our problem, not yours. To a certain degree, so I mean, I'm just kind of thinking out loud and talking it through, so we'll just have to figure out the direction we go. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll apply accordingly. Yeah, Attorney McGrail, I, I think you, you kind of have. A, a good guidance on, from past projects and what we've said now about what. Will probably be accepted, so as long as you're willing to work with us. It's a two-way, you know, it's a two-way process, if. You know, if you don't want to. You know, make any concessions for anything else, then. Go ahead, by right, do a by right subdivision and, and, and put it in, that's fine, but. You're gonna be asking for waivers. We potentially gonna be asking for, for things, you know, we're not asking you to. Build a helipad or something, it's usually small things, so. I, I don't think we've, as a board, been completely unreasonable. We understand you need to go forward with a, with a design set. You know, I, I think you have enough guidance here. I think you're right, I do. All right. Nick, did you, I think my client, Nick, did you have a hand raised, if I couldn't miss it yet, that's the owner of the property, so.
Great stuff.
Nick, you're muted.
Sorry, guys, Nicholas Seo here, thank you guys for your time. I would just say, I guess if, if the big thing also is, you know, between the forty feet and the fifty feet. Is more or less, you know, regarding the parking on the street, you know, we're happy to work with you guys and. Come up with certain things that, you know, restrict parking or whatever we can do to minimize, obviously, the board's concerns there. And as for the sidewalk, I was just thinking. On lot one, you know, one thing we could also do there is kind of loop it up a little bit to, to the driveway. Of, for lot one where the curb cut is and that would obviously help the access to lot one. And everything after that would basically. Not really serve a, a needed purpose, so. We're happy to work with you guys and obviously get to an end result that the neighborhood and the board and everyone can be happy with. That's all.
Much appreciated, I, I, there's a pretty good consensus about just the, the one-sided sidewalk. The, I, I. You know, I think the, I think the comments about. The street parking and. The maximum numbers of, of cars and, and, and that. Does impact the, the road width and so that.
Yep. Yeah, and the goal here is obviously for all, all of the units on the. On the single residence, general residence and whatever we end up doing industrial to, to have garages as well, you know, I think it's a. It's kind of a needed feature in, in housing these days and, you know, people look for, so we're looking to have. As much garage parking and off-street parking as possible, that will hopefully minimize any. You know, issues with, with parking even being on street or even creating a need for any, it's, you know, our ultimate plan. And hope for the final outcome.
Yeah, I think, I think what we'll, what we'll do is we'll probably design it as at a forty foot. With the, with the one sidewalk and, and, and hopefully we can work through issues and if we can't, we could always adjust it, Rich, and, and go up to fifty to meet, to make it. Non-wavable, but I don't think, I think Matt's right, historically, you know. I think we'll be able to work some of those issues out.
Yeah, the, the. The size of the circle doesn't change whether it's a forty or fifty, so. From that, from that standpoint, we, we won't be restricting the movement down there. It would only be the width as you go through between lots one, two and three.
Based on our discussions, Mr. Chair, we would respectfully ask you to approve the preliminary plan. With the comments that you have and reserving your right. To, you know. Anticipate that you would, you know, want some conditions as it's concerned to parking and, and other aspects.
And for. You know. Recognizing the, sort of the, the public process, us approving tonight. Would then give you a, a shorter time window. When you bring the subdivision. I'm getting, I, I've misstated things.
Yeah, it's actu, yeah, it's actually. The, the, the approval or disapproval of a preliminary plan means nothing. It's not binding. So, you know, it's really just like you're saying, hey, you know, we, conceptually, we approve this, but you're not committing that you're gonna approve the definitive plan, it's not, it's not. Doesn't bind, it, it doesn't bind you and if you deny it, it's the same thing, really. It's kind of a non-event, but the way the subdivision control law is, it just, you have to do one or the other. And, and that, and that, those are your options, so. You know, it, it really doesn't matter and again. You know, the key thing is with subdivisions, it, it, when the definitive is filed, if your rules and regulations for design and standards are met in the definitive plan. You have to approve it. And, and I'm not saying that, like, oh, you, you, you know that, I mean, that's the law and that's, you know, people are allowed to, to subdivide their land and, and you have to have rules and regulations. In place like every city in town does and if you meet those, it's an entitlement of the property owner that, that, that gets approved. So, you know, so that's just the way that the, the subdivision process works. This isn't a special permit project for like a multifamily building that, you know, becomes discretionary and. And, you know, typical stuff that you might see at the zoning board of appeals, this is a total different animal. And I know your board knows that, so. Just in a cooperative effort, working together to potentially get those waivers, reduce the impact on the pavement, I think it would be. We were respectfully asking you to approve it with those conditions and reserving your rights. To require other conditions, that's fine too.
Well, I respect the clarification and I respect the, the very polite. Head nodding to correct my, my misstatement. Yeah, Jim.
Mr. Chair, yeah, Attorney McGrail, I, I believe that there is an impact. Related to the fact that we've had a preliminary which does impact the, the review window for the definitive, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't remember that.
It reduces, it reduces the number of, it reduces the number of days that once we file the definitive plan, then it reduces the number of days, but. What is, this board knows, I've never, I've never played that game, I'm always willing to give extensions when we're, when we're going through that process.
I think.
The preliminary subdivision process that we're going through now is, is not required. So as you know, a lot of, lot of property owners just go right to a definitive plan, they don't even bother with this preliminary plan. Uniquely though, with residential subdivisions. What the law says, it's. It's discretionary that you have a choice if you do it, if it's not residential. Then you have to do a preliminary plan. Where some of, and I'm kind of confused by this because part of our land is in the industrial district. Even though we're, we're probably gonna be proposing a residential use there, you know, the, the law really doesn't define what it means by non-residential. So I, I think it was kind of prudent for us to do a preliminary plan because some of our land is zoned in, in the industrial district.
All right, thank you, I'm gonna step right out of reach to. Let my dog out of the room, sorry. I apologize for that and. Any other discussions from board members, does anyone? Do we have a motion?
I will have a, I have another comment, I.
Sure.
In my few years I've been on the board, I don't recall ever approving a. Preliminary subdivision with conditions. I, I have denied preliminary subdivisions. But typically, we've just. Taken, you know, the information in. And not made a recommendation for or against it and. Just for point of order, if, if someone does make a motion to. You know. Recommend this, I will abstain from that, so.
Yeah, I don't know if the bylaw states for a preliminary, the board may approve the preliminary plan with or without modification or it may disapprove said plan stating the reason for its disapproval. And then it goes on, but just so you knew what the legal language was, Theo.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the subdivision plan as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Um, all right, um, all in favor? Uh, Kevin?
Yes.
All right, Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Abstain.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, um, thank you, and uh, yeah, I appreciate it.
And we'll be back with the definitive at some point in time, so thank you, appreciate your time.
I'm just, Mister Chair, if Attorney McGrail is um usually on the bottom of our um notes, we've been adding. Um. When this might happen or to a deadline, is this one of the conditions that there would be a date set? To when we would need to see or work with you and your team for the definitive subdivision plan?
No, I mean, that's really up to us, Mister Spalding.
Okay.
When we do that, um, one of the, one of the benefits of filing a preliminary subdivision plan is the zoning is frozen.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And so we have, we have seven months for the date that we filed the preliminary plan to file our definitive plan to maintain our zoning free, so I think.
Right.
You can anticipate that we will be filing it within the next seven, within the next six months.
Right, and that's the seven months is what I was thinking of, because I know this has come up before, we were very, very close on a few projects to it. And I just wanted to make sure that's either noted in our notes or something in case, and there's so many things that will be happening over. The next few months, I just want to make sure that it doesn't just get um missed.
Because Mister Williams has a lot of work to do now before we'll be ready to file the definitive with all the drainage study and all the stuff that has to go into it.
Six months of work, sorry.
I hope not.
Right.
All right.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, everyone, all right, um, and. Our last item on the agenda is uh item five, um. We had uh item, any remaining items not anticipated by the chair? Okay. Uh, seeing none, um, I would uh, uh, just make the um. The comment that our ag- our agenda next meeting really is to have the two public hearings about uh the other two districts. Um, as as mentioned earlier, um. And uh. And that, that's all I I have on our radar for the moment, um. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make an emotion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Bill, all right.
Second.
All right, thank you, Kevin, uh, all in favor, Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so, um. Thank you all for um a very uh thoughtful and considerate public process.